Good evening and welcome to the Long Meadow Select Board Meeting of September 17, 2018. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening's agenda includes a liquor license transfer hearing as well as discussions about the delegation of change authority for the building commission, building committee, excuse me, plastic bag ban, some one liquor, one day liquor license approval, discussions about complete street sidewalks, and a change of our street opening at the Big Y. Before we get into that, I just want to make a couple of announcements if I can. One is that I've added to the agenda based on the events of last Thursday, and because of that, it was something that wasn't foreseen and could not necessarily be known by the Chair, a topic of discussion about Columbia Gas and responsible management of the gas pipelines, and we'll talk more about that with an item on the agenda. I'll have something to say also in select board comments. I also have a note here that town has announced flu clinics that are open to the public. They're Wednesday, October 3rd, at the Greenwood Center Gym, 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and then Wednesday, October 10th, at the Council of Aging, at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and October 15th, noon to 1:30 p.m. The entire schedule and goes beyond that is on our town website, and do encourage town citizens to look for the schedule of our flu clinics that are available and open to the public. The other announcement I do have is that we have identified and have announced, but I'm not going to do it tonight only because it's a little premature early voting date, so there will be early voting. I think it starts as early as October 22nd, Paul, I believe. So for those of you who are already looking forward to the statewide national election on November 6th, please be aware that there is early voting, and there'll be more about that as we move forward. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Steven?
Marie, if you want, the Public Safety Appreciation Day is October 13th from 10:02 at the fire station.
And the appreciation ceremony will be at 11 o'clock.
Any other announcements? Okay, thank you very much. I'll ask if there are any resident comments, if any residents have any comments that they'd like to add. No?
Resident comments?
No?
Okay.
Seeing none, I'll ask for select board comments, and I'd like to start kind of in an unprecedented manner. I certainly watched with, I don't know if it's horror or, I mean, the gas, the events of last Thursday in Merrimack Valley in Massachusetts, and I think when we look at what happened in Lawrence, North Andover and Andover relative to what we saw in downtown Springfield about a year or two ago, and what's going on in the city of, in the town of Long Meadow with the repair of gas leaks, I personally come to the conclusion, as somebody who spent 40, 30, 35 years in a major chemical company, someplace where safety is overwhelmingly discussed, that I'm not sure Columbia Gas is being able to operate their systems in a manner that the town of Long Meadow would like them to. And so I've added to the agenda, and we'll be discussing later with the select board members, the potential of putting a moratorium on Columbia Gas construction in the town of Long Meadow until they've demonstrated their ability to deliver gas to us in a safe and reasonable manner. So again, I want to express my condolences to the gentleman who was killed in Lawrence and to the families whose homes were destroyed there, and wanted to let people know that it certainly struck a note with me, and I don't know about anybody else on the select board, but we will be talking about it in the future. Does anybody else have any other select board comments?
I think you have to go back to resident comments.
Okay, I was told there is a resident comment, residents' comments. If you'd come forward, please, you have to sit at the table, you know, I'm sorry we missed you. Those microphones are for the cable TV, but you need to kind of talk closer to the microphones. If you'd just introduce yourselves and tell us where you are, who you are, and where you live.
My name is Francesca Trotta, and I live on 37 Homcush Street, Long Meadow, Massachusetts.
My name's Sophia Gordon, and I live on 84 Elma Dade, in Long Meadow, Massachusetts.
Sophia, can you pull that mic a little closer to you, and you also pull the mic closer so they can pick you up, your voice is kind of soft. Thank you.
Good evening. We are part of the group of concerned Long Meadow public school, public school students who came to you back in the spring about the effects of plastic bags on our environment. 100 million marine animals die from plastic bags every year. We know we can make a difference here in the town of Long Meadow.
The plastic bag ban was passed by the majority of the town residents by the Democratic vote in May. The Energy of the Sustainability Committee wrote a bylaw ba, based on the proposed ban of 84 towns in Massachusetts already passed, and you gave us a charge to do so. We are here to urge you to make adopting by the law, by law of priority in our community.
1 million plastic bags are used every minute. Therefore, we want to remind you that every minute counts. Please support us in making a difference.
Thank you very much, ladies. I appreciate you coming to the select board. Are there any other comments, residents' comments or select board comments? No? Okay. We have a liquor license transfer hearing, but it's not scheduled till 7:15, and so we can't move ahead with that quite yet, but I'd like to move forward on the agenda. And next was our town manager's report, and I don't know, Steven, if you can give us about eight minutes worth, and then we can come back if we need to.
I have to stretch it out. It's been eight minutes. So one of the things I wanted to talk about, I didn't want to do it, I guess I could have done announcements, but obviously, we're going to get some heavy rains all day tomorrow as a result of the remnants of Hurricane Florence. Our guys were out cleaning catch basins today in anticipation of the event, but I would encourage residents, if you have catch basins in front of your house, just double-check them. You know, obviously, if you see street flooding, you report to the police department or during the day to the DPW, and just take precautions to make sure that your, you know, your safety and your home are protected. It's going to be, there's anywhere from an inch to four inches of rain, depending on how the thing shakes out, so just, you know, it's a lot of rain in one day. And then I did have a couple of comments I was going to make about Columbia Gas as well, but I can, if you're going to have a separate agenda item, I've done, we did some internal work on that today.
Great, yeah, why don't we save that, Steven? Thank you.
So you have the other reports from the departments in there. A lot of the capital projects that were funded are moving forward. The library windows are going to be delivered, and there'll be a container on site on September 25th, I'm told. And so we'll be seeing, and more roadwork as well. The paving program for FY19 is underway, and Dwight Road is also ongoing, the Dwight Road, Road Construction Project. We are experiencing some project delays associated with the availability of equipment, traffic signal equipment, but we have not received the, kind of the formal notification from the contractor of what's delayed, how long it's going to be delayed, when they expect it to be finished. When we have that information, we'll certainly have it as a discussion point here. And outside of Town Hall, at the community, in front of the community house, the community house roadway project is getting started. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the crosswalk for the complete streets aspect of that, so hopefully, we'll have enough information to determine how we want to treat the raised crosswalk, and both those projects will get going in earnest.
Anybody have any questions to the town manager about that or any of the other reports?
Oh, I do have one more thing. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with, I believe, representatives from Piney Valley Planning Commission in East Long Meadow to talk, to talk further about the potential of a regional health district. There are 16 regional health districts in the Commonwealth, just none, none near us, and as Beverly Herschel and I have been, we've been part of a, an analysis that PVPC has been doing to take a look at the benefits of being a part of a regional district, with the focus being on mostly inspectional services and trying to find ways to get some economy of scale there, but still at its infant stages right now, but as it advances, I'll provide additional reporting.
Marie?
Couple of questions, not what you reported, but just what is the status of the Amtrak crossing? Who are we waiting for now? Is it still waiting on Amtrak to respond for what?
We're still waiting for Amtrak, waiting for a contract to be signed by Amtrak and MASTDOT.
So the-
We do, we do check in periodically, and it's, you know, it's a contract between the two entities.
Were we expecting it by September and October, or is it just still open-ended?
Of which year?
Oh, really?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it, it's, based on what I've heard, the document is near, the contract is near agreement. We have tried to elevate it to the Senate level. I think that may have happened, but it really is just, Amtrak is a large organization, and MASTDOT is also a large organization. I just think between the two entities, it's just, it's just take a long time to get the agreement done. I, I think everyone who I speak to about it has every confidence, it will get done, it's just the timing.
And then the, the regional dispatch. I've heard there's been some movement about possible other towns showing interest again. Have there's been any communications with you directly on that?
Not communications with me directly, but I've said all the way along, I have no doubt that other towns are going to want to join us when we get going. And like I said, we're doing some administrative work, having our, we're trying to retain a technology consultant to really analyze all of our communications and technology systems. There's a procurement issue, a mindless bureaucratic procurement issue we're dealing with before that can happen, but once we get them under contract, we'll, I think things will pick up quite quickly.
And the bonding from the governor on the cap for the, that's still outstanding. Nothing's been delivered on that.
We're still working on that.
Okay, thank you.
I can bring up the date on that later.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other questions? It's 7:13 or 14, and I'm going to declare that we're going to start the liquor license transfer hearing, because I think all the interested parties are here, and so I'd invite people who represent the Paris Naples Restaurant Group LLC to please step forward, and I believe, you know, that we'll find out what's, what's going on there. If you, gentlemen, again, I don't know if you heard me describe, the microphones are for the, for our cable TV, not necessarily for the room, so you're going to have to speak up so everybody in the room can hear you, but if you just grab a seat and introduce yourselves, we can get to what this is all about. I'd like to accept a motion to open the hearing.
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor. Vote is 5-0 to open the hearing, so please, if you can, just introduce yourselves and-
Absolutely. My name is Jerry Plum, and I'm the attorney for the Paris Naples Restaurant Group LLC, and with me is Nick Silvestri, who's, will be the manager of record on the transferred liquor license.
Great, great, and, you know, we don't have a formal process here. I guess we'd like to just have you describe what your plans are for the facilities for people at home who don't know. This is the facility formerly occupied by Rinaldi's Restaurant, and the application's been for a transfer of the license from Rinaldi's to Paris Naples Restaurant Group LLC. So can you just describe a little bit what your plans are, management, when you plan to open, things that people who are watching at home might want, might be interested in?
Certainly. So I'll do a brief introduction, then I'll turn it over to Nick, but my client's concept is that it will be a higher-end French restaurant and wine bar. He's planning on investing a significant amount of money into the build-out of the location. It's probably going to take somewhere between four to six months, I would say, to build out and to get it to the point where he would like it to be, and he's excited about the project. He thinks it's going to be something that's going to be very attractive to the town, to the residents, and provide something that, that doesn't exist, and certainly on that side of town. Nick, who's with me, has a significant amount of experience in management in the restaurant and bar business, and I know has a little bit more insight into the, the concept and what particularly is, is going to be the aim of the, of the endeavor.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're, we're looking to make it be kind of a very intimate setting. We're going to have, like, we just spoke about before, we're going to have a kind of French restaurant. It's going to be wine-forward. We kind of want to bring back small French plates. We will be going to grab a chef, probably from a Paris-like restaurant, whether it's in New York or over in Paris to do that. So that will add a really great kind of spin to it. It's going to be less than normal restaurant operations, I would say, so not as busy as you would see at a Max Burger or something. So we kind of wanted to keep it a little bit small, so families, friends, most people can walk in there and sit there and have a conversation with the people that they are across from, and be able to hear that. So a lot of small plates, it's going to be, we think it's going to be great, so.
Great. If you don't have any other comments, I'll just open it up for questions if you don't mind.
Certainly.
So, you know, I personally, and I think others may be curious about your business, but I think we want to try to focus on the liquor license and the liquor license transfer if we can, so if there are any questions, Marie.
Hours, I know that was said, because that's a discussion we've always had. How, how many hours do you want the liquor license to be available?
As many as possible. We won't be doing anything in the morning, obviously, but we will most likely open the facility in the morning to do some French baguettes, some French-style breakfast, quick café-style coffees, if so, for the front part of the restaurant, so that's kind of what we're thinking for there, but later on at night, we'll definitely want to be able to have, you know, our wine, being able to serve to all of our guests that are in there for dinner, early lunch.
Yeah, I, I would say because it's a transfer, we would, it would mirror the hours that Rinaldi's presently has, and that's attached to the application, and I think it specifies the hours, which is, it's 11 to, get it out, 11 a.m. to like 1 a.m., something like that, but it would mirror the existing license hours.
Anybody, any other questions? I, I guess I'm asking, and I don't know if the right question is to you or to our liquor license clerk is, that why this is a transfer instead of a new license? You know, generally, I think of a transfer that we've handled as, as under, you know, same business under new ownership, or new manager coming in, but this is a, a new business, new owner, new manager, and unlike some communities in the eastern part of the state that are liquor license limited, we actually have several liquor licenses we can yet give out. I mean, so, you know, if Rinaldi's in fact had relinquished their liquor license, or even if they didn't relinquish their liquor license, there are others that you could have applied for. So why is this a transfer, and more importantly, why is it qualify, why should I approve it to qualify as a transfer when I see it as a new liquor license?
Well, because it, if, part of the process, and we've attached it to the, to the application, is an asset purchase agreement. We've actually purchased the assets of Rinaldi's, including the right to license the name if we so choose, although at this point, we're certainly not going to, but other assets in the building that we've purchased, and one of those things is the liquor license, and it was contingent upon transfer of the liquor license. And I believe under state law, it is a transfer of the liquor license, because the liquor license is location-specific, not business-specific. And I realize that there is not a moratorium or a limitation right now on liquor licenses in Long Meadow, so we could have applied for a new one, but I think it also qualifies for a transfer. I think it's, it's largely form over substance, and it's a little bit of semantics. I think we could have gone either way, and I think it, they both qualify is, is the answer, but you're not wrong in terms of, it could have been an application for a new license.
Okay, that's fine. Anybody else have, have any other questions about this? The license, or, excuse me, the application as completed does not, you know, it says, you know, hour, days and hours, it does not have that on there. You alluded to the fact that there was an attachment of the Rinaldi's license, and we didn't see that. I don't know.
Maybe it wasn't an attachment, but I do have a copy of it, and, and, and so it is, the existing license is Sunday through Monday, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m., and Wednesday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. Those are the existing hours. Would we want it later?
We would probably want to try to get it as late as possible.
So, so if it's possible to get to the 1 a.m., I think that we would want that.
So you said, and again, I apologize, that, that license is 11 p.m. to 11, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. Monday, Sunday through Mon-
Sunday through Monday.
Yeah.
And Wednesday through Saturday, the same hours. They were closed on Tuesdays, at least, when this license was taken out. I don't, that would not be the case for us.
Okay, is that, I, before, we're going to get into a discussion, I think, but before we do, I think, just want to know if any, are there any other questions for the petitioners, and then if not, we can close the hearing, then get into a discussion and a vote. Just going through the formal process here. Any, any other questions? Okay, accept a motion to close the hearing then.
Someone?
Is there a second? Motion's made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Lowe. Any comments, all in favor? Vote is five, five to zero to close the hearing. So now, just open it for discussion. Tom, looks like you've got-
Well, I just, I'm having trouble getting the floor plan to come up, but the, is there going to be a difference in terms of parking? Is there going to be any sort of an issue? I don't know. Do they have to go and have that checked out?
It depends on the number of seats they want to have. They just went back to the, as you recall, the ZBA and the planning board just looked, relooked at all of that as a part of the baitlet shop moving in, and if he's going to have fewer seats than Rinaldi's did, or the same, then it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, all right. Marie?
The liquor licenses we just granted were the new ones, and they started early in the morning, but I remember, what time did they end? Was it midnight or 1:00? That the ones that we were, we just gave to White Kitchen and-
It wasn't 1:00, it was 1:00 or 1:30?
Meeting.
In the morning? Okay.
The hours, ABCC sets, and then the town can go earlier or later.
I just don't know how the other ones in town are doing. Did the meeting house and the kitchen get to go past midnight? Do we have a-
I have to look it up, I can't remember.
Where would it be then? Because I thought, would it be in the minutes?
The meeting did go to 1:00?
Yeah, I don't know that it would be in the minutes. I think it'd be in the licenses.
Do they want to go to 1:00?
Well, I think we would take whatever the latest thing is that anybody else does.
The issue we have is because it wasn't on the light, on the application specifically, you know, I'd personally be hard-pressed to vote for it, because there may be neighbors who say, I don't mind a liquor license to 11:00, but I might object to a liquor license going to midnight or beyond 11 o'clock, and, and so it's, it makes for a tough, personally, a tough decision for me to make that based on not having, if you will, posted this as a liquor license to run through 1 a.m. And what, you know, my personal opinion, and this is just a comment, is to approve it to 11 p.m., which is what we, what the transfer was from Rinaldi's, and then if you want to come back and petition-
That's fine.
-for a longer time, we would, we would go back and look at that and give people a chance to comment on it.
That's absolutely fine.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think just one thing I want to add, though, too, is the fact that even if it was a little bit later, if we come back and we talk about it, it's not going to be, you know, a wild, crazy establishment, you know, but it's one of those things where if we have the flexibility, it will be nice, but like we said, the 11 o'clock is fine. So one thing before you guys vote, Paul just mentioned that even though it's transferring now, they're going to have to renew in January, along with all other liquor license holders, and so that may be a good time to reevaluate your timing, your closing time, when you go to, to when you go to renew.
Absolutely.
That's a good point, Steven. Thank you, Paul.
Glad you could help.
Thanks, Paul. Is there a time that this would open? Do you have a start date?
Yeah, we think the build-out, obviously, we can't put an exact time on it, but what do we think for build-out?
Yeah, probably next summer, most likely. We don't want to rush anything, we don't want to get, you know, hard-pressed for time. The conversations that I've had has been probably next summer, is what we're looking at. Early, early, yeah.
Early summer, sure. Okay.
Debbie, the only thing I'd ask is if the minutes can just reflect that discussion about closing time, so we have a record of that, if we want to go back to it. Any other comments?
I'm just, I'm thinking, in terms of Long Meadow Street, you know, we have a liquor store, but is there any other establishment or people can go in and get a drink on Long Meadow Street? I don't believe there is.
No, it's just Rinaldi's.
It was Rinaldi's.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Their house.
And at my house. That's true.
So you're looking for a motion now?
If there are no further discussions, I'm looking for a motion, sure.
Move to approve the transfer of the liquor license.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, bill due-
Well, they're always subject to, you know, the health inspection, and the, so it goes, approving it but not issuing one.
Yeah, the ABCC as well has to-
Right.
There's a number of inspections that have to take place before they actually get the license.
I guess I'd be remiss without giving Mr. Silvestri the same comments I give to everybody else who's in front of yours.
I was waiting for it.
Sorry, Marie, I, sorry to disappoint you, Marie. It's that the town of Long Meadow takes their liquor licenses seriously. We, we conduct enforcement through unmarked police officers and have a policy about revoking licenses for people who, who don't, you know, who serve minors. We also require, as part of your liquor license renewal, that anybody serving liquor be trained, and whether it's SafeServe or their tips or something like that.
Always, yeah.
So, just a, okay, Marie, so I've completed my advocate. Anybody, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, take a vote. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, was actually, was the delegation of a change authority to the Long Meadow Building Committee for the folks at home. What we did is, there's been a discussion about, we have a permanent building committee, the permanent building committee's been overseeing the construction of the DPW building, will oversee the construction of the adult center, and there are times and issues when, in the course of building projects such as this, contractors require change orders. And there was a discussion about who and how and what those change orders can be approved and delegated to the, to the permanent building committee, and a couple of meetings ago, a month ago, we decided to turn this over. Mr. Foster's representing the select board, had some discussions, I believe, with members of the permanent building committee who are represented in front of us and are prepared to make a recommendation, so I'll turn it over to you, Richard.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Yeah, the, we did meet at the last building meeting, we had a roundhouse discussion on it. It seemed to be the major point of contention, and the old policy was the statement of the 5% approval contingency. So the board, with Steven's guidance, with Paul, we talked in considerable length about what we thought was reasonable and fair for delegation of authorities. We did cover the point that any change in scope would be an automatic referral to the select board before anything was to take place, so we make sure that we wanted to, in fact, entertain that, and there didn't seem to be any disagreement with that. There was a little discussion on what scope was, but I think it's pretty well-understood what that would be. At the conclusion of that study, there were some recommendations made. We firm, I think the group firmly believes that delegation of authority is an important aspect that we have vested in, in these groups, in the town manager, and that contracts of, say, a $20 million range can, can have some other, large change orders take place, but we also knew that a major change order would be before the board, so there is safety gaps, there's gaps all the way along. In essence, we ended up saying that $0 to $25,000 would fall into the town manager's approval range. We know the town manager meets with us, we know that we would be in the pocket on all those change orders. $25,000, $25,001 to $50,000, town manager and the LBC Subcommittee Approval Authority. Again, the town manager's part of the puzzle. To $50,000 to $7499, we'd be town manager and LBC Approval Authority. So that would be the full building committee with the town manager. Again, town manager briefs us, so we know we're going to be in the pocket on every bit of this. Above $75,000 is automatic referral to the select board with the recommendations for the, the building committee, with a strong recommendation. And again, the town manager was not mentioned in this- And again, the town manager was not mentioned in this because we said at that point, it really is referred to our board. And Stephen would actually like to be out there testifying on behalf and support of the change order and filling us in on the details. I think the main thing is that anything of a scope change automatically comes to the board. So we're in, we're in day one. You know, we have the liaison member being part of the committee. If, as long as the person stays involved with the committee, I think the board can be well assured there'll be a lot of communication taking place. We're experiencing some odd situations right now that I hope doesn't set up precedence with these, with asbestos that we've found. So it's kind of well out of the ordinary. That was my feelings. The group unanimously agreed. There's two members here tonight that have given up on their time to come in and brief the other members of the board in case you did have detailed questions or discuss what the limits were. So, okay, Mark?
Yeah, I guess, just for clarification, the $25 to $50,000 is town manager, and you said some subcommittee of the, of the building?
Yeah, a subcommittee.
What, what is that?
Um, we, Mary Beth Moore, 44 Essex Court. We took a group, a subgroup within the building committee that is focusing on the DPW construction project, attending the meetings that go on, on a bi-weekly or weekly basis. So that group is, you know, much more knowledgeable on the day-to-day activities, construction-wise.
Okay, thanks, Marie.
I have a question on the subcommittee. Is our liaison part of the subcommittee? How many people are on the subcommittee?
I believe there are three of us right now, and we had not invited Richard, but.
On the committee. He's not on the committee.
No, not on the committee. But I could be invited. Stephen could be invited. It's.
We also get copies of all the meeting minutes, and, and we can certainly forward those to Richard.
Right. Now, I will be at the meeting where the subcommittee makes their, their recommendations.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
So there, there is, there is that select board presence in there, or at least a, a feeling that the select board is there. That warm, that warm fuzzy.
Anybody else have any other questions, Stephen?
So I guess, because we didn't, they did have a robust discussion about it, but one of the things that, just the definition of, of the word scope. I don't know if there's a, I just want to make sure, like, you move, you take out a, in the men's locker, you take a toilet out and put a urinal in because of use or something like that. Is that a scope change? I mean, it wouldn't be a scope change, but I think it's size of building, you know.
If you put a new bathroom in, it wasn't planned, that's scope change.
Right.
Yeah.
For the board's consideration, what's a scope change? Is something, a meaningful change to the design?
Right.
I guess, Richard, I, the question I have is, are all these levels and change order authorities all constrained by the portion of the budget that, that, you know, we have in terms of contingency budget? Is that what we're talking about? So this is all?
Right, it all falls, it all falls under contingency. And that'll be flushed out in the rest of the policy, Mark. It seemed to be that this part of the approval was the only thing we were really debating.
Okay, so is there an overall, so there's an overall policy besides just these amounts that?
Yeah, 'cause anything above, above and beyond contingency actually is a scope creep.
Well, we don't have appropriation if it's.
Yeah, we don't have appropriation, so.
Well, but I'll just give you a theoretical. I mean, it's, the contingency is, you know, we're, we're down the road a year, and the contingency is used up. And there's a decision that we're gonna do value engineering. And, you know, value engineering, it's not a scope change, but instead of putting in the rugs we planned, we're gonna put in less expensive rugs, so we can afford to do something else, or we're gonna put in.
That is a scope change.
Yeah, we would.
So that's fine, as long as you consider that a, a scope change.
We would be in front of you, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're making recommendations to the select board.
That's, that's fine. I just.
That's what we would be doing.
Okay, I, see, I, that's fine, if that's considered a scope change, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I would look at the scope change being if it's more expensive, not less expensive.
Well, no, but, but we're putting in less expensive rugs to make room for another, another change order. That, that's, you know, what I'm, you know, because we can't go over the overall budget. And so, it's beyond the contingency budget, but it's still, uh, within these limitations.
I would consider that a scope change. 'Cause you're, you're, you're taking away from the original thing. There's been a change in the scope.
That's fine. I, I was just looking for, not looking for trouble, looking for clarification. That's fine. So, does anybody else have any other questions or comments? I don't know, Mary Beth or Peter, if you want.
It's our hope that we can take this, you know, that, take this and move it forward with all the projects going forward. So, I mean, that was our, kind of our hope, you know, so we're not revisiting this every single project that the town retained, so.
And, and that's fine. I think, I think it's a matter of.
These numbers and trying.
It's a matter of how we, how we word the, the delegation of authority, whether it's the project delegation of authority or just the general delegation of authority. And since Richard's got the, got the motion in front of him, address your counsel.
Well, it's not a finished motion at this point, because the, the thing that we wanted to do, do before we put the final approval on this is, is to get the board's general feelings. Are you okay with these dollar limits? Because that seemed to be the thing that was holding up the policy before.
So you're not looking for a motion, you're just looking for?
We're looking for a real strong nod that this is okay.
So, so my question for, for Peter and Mary Beth is, why the difference between the building, the, the, in this case, the DP, the, the project subcommittee, in this case, the DPW project subcommittee, who's more intimately knowledgeable about this, versus the overall, you know, permanent building committee? It seems to me that that's an, an extra layer there that, you know, I'm just trying to understand the, the rationale of having four layers instead of three.
I think it was timing, you know, rather than wait for our next scheduled meeting, we, we have this subcommittee represented at every one of the construct, week, they should be weekly soon. You know, and we can make decisions on a more timely basis versus having to have the whole committee involved in some of the smaller changes that come up.
I'm fine with that. My question wasn't the subcommittee. My question was why the whole committee at all?
I see.
You know, if you folks are knowledgeable about it, why are we, you know, why are we going back to a bunch of people?
It's just a level of comfort for the select.
Spreading the responsibility.
Sounds fine, Peter. I mean, we're not, we're not talking, you know, millions of dollars here, so.
I think the building committee as a whole felt it was important to be involved when there were more significant changes.
That's, that's fine. I, I accept that as a viable answer. Any other, so, Richard, I, anybody object to it? So, Richard, I guess the charter is, to you is, go back, write this finalized, finalize this thing up and put it on the next agenda and move it through.
Should be all that on the next agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thanks, guys.
Marie's asked that I, we wait for somebody on the next article that was, the next item that was scheduled on the agenda, so I'm just gonna move down. We need to, we have a, a vacancy on our, the, what's the LCMAC stand for, Stephen?
Local Community Mitigation Advisory Committee.
Thank you. So, this is a group that was determined, that was formed to recommend appropriations or allocations for any funding from the supplemental mitigation fund coming out of the MGM Casino. Each of the surrounding towns had a member to it. The member from the Town of Long Meadow has resigned. So we're looking to appoint the replacement, our alternate, I guess, right? It was.
So our primary member resigned, and then Steve Morantz was the alternate. And I spoke with him, and he said he was okay being the, the primary member.
Okay, so the request is to appoint Steve Morantz as the primary representative to the Community Mitigation Action Committee. Marie?
I have some questions. The responsibility, are there regular meetings that they have to attend? Or is it just once a year when the mitigation fund is considered, whether we're gonna be applying in, in February? What is the responsibility of this person?
They have regular, I think, quarterly meetings.
Okay.
There is some level of reporting, but we, we handle that. As you recall, town personnel, you know, do most of the administrative work, but under a, there was an ethics depart, or an ethics commission ruling that members of this committee are special state employees, and you can't be a special state employee and a special town employee, which, I don't get that, but that's what they said. That's why we had, we got resident volunteers. But right now, there really isn't a lot to it. You have to remember that to demonstrate, to get mitigation, you have to demonstrate significant and adverse effects under this. That was the language that was the Gaming Act had. And so, for the purposes of our surrounding community agreement and award, that's, has nothing to do with this. This is additional grant funds that are based on revenue. And right now, we are, you know, just opened less than a month ago, but we are actively monitoring any impacts that we may see. So if, at a future time, we can apply, we actually have money that they've allocated to us that we have not spent because we haven't kind of settled on what's the thing we want to go ask for, 'cause it's not just, it's not just an open, you know, checkbook. So that's one of the things that we're working on, is making sure we're documenting any impacts that we may see.
So when was the last meeting, if they were quarterly?
I think it was one meeting of the summer.
Okay, 'cause it'd be nice to maybe bring them in twice a year to be able to report to us what was at the meeting, Mark, as, yeah. So that they're more in, and then do they, they probably talk to other representatives from other towns, right?
Yeah, it, every, or, most communities have representatives there.
And also, can we, 'cause it's, it's showing change of, it's, it has to show effects, but also, if it's change of circumstances, can we also apply? Because I know one of the things is they changed that they could, what was it that they could, there was a time, I think it was this past summer or last spring, that they made the law change that they could serve till 4:00 AM, and that was a change of circumstances. And I don't know if we can apply just because they changed that, that we had to do more coverage late at night? Or do we actually have to show there were more incidences between 1:00 and 4:00? But it's just something to keep in mind.
I don't think that type of thing would qualify. I think you have to have it demonstrated. We've gone, and we've talked to the Gaming Commission, the Ombudsman's Office, who manages the program, several times the last few years about the grant we already have in hand, about various ways we could apply that. And it's not, it's not all that easy to find a fit. We've talked about a bunch of things. The chief, who's here, I think, went to a meeting or two, and, and talked about some planning for joint training exercises and things like that. But that ended up going in a different direction. So it's not, it's not just walk up to the window and, you know, they're just gonna give you the local community mitigation money.
Oh, no. I know. It's, it's something you have to fight and argue for, but we could also not just look at effects, but I think change of circumstances. We should keep that in mind, is a possibility.
Sure.
And so if we could, so it would be, Mr. Morantz is who you were talking about?
Yeah.
And so he hasn't had a chance to attend a meeting yet, even though he's an alternative.
He had been to a couple meetings early on, but.
Oh, he did?
I just, I don't, I think Steve fully covered the last few, and I don't, I haven't really, I've been talking to Steve Morantz about solar panels more than I have about casino stuff. So I, I don't know where he's.
So we should probably have another one in the fall, if they're quarterly.
Potentially.
One, another one should be coming up.
Yeah, we'll talk to Steve Morantz about it.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Marie. Okay, so.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, we do need a motion to appoint Steve Morantz to the LCMAC.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion's made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Lucusa. Any comments? All in favor? Vote passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Next item is a one-day liquor license approval for Bay Path for their alumni reunions. And just looking for a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for October 27th, 4:30 to 7:00 PM.
For Bay Path?
For Bay Path University.
So moved.
Motion's made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Lowe. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Moving, moving, moving right along. Stephen, if you will, the report on streetlight audit directive, just if I could, introducing this, that, it was some time ago. It was probably six, six or eight weeks ago, the, our energy subcommittee or our energy committee made a recommendation, the select board then adopted a, a request that the town manager identify, solicit, and execute a audit of our, of our streetlights. Those are the lights that light up our streets at night, not our traffic signals, for the potential purpose of, of potentially buying our streetlights down the road. We've had a couple of recommendations from vendors of what would be required. And so, Mr. Crane has a, has a report of the status of that action.
So, the Metropolitan Planning Commission, which is basically the Boston area version of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, got a contract to provide statewide assistance to municipalities with regard to everything streetlight, whether it's purchase or conversion. And I did receive information from them that they actually have pre-selected vendors who can do an audit. They can do an independent audit. They can also, you know, go to different, you can pick and choose what scope of work you want. I think we've all kind of consensed around the idea we do want independent audit. So we don't have to go out to bid. We don't have to do all the procurement. We can just hire one of the, I believe, four firms that they have settled on. Yeah, so they have settled, they have approved four firms with pricing per different units, whether it's a price to do an audit per light or a price to do certain things, certain functions by certain units of measure. So, if the board wants to, if the board agrees that we should proceed with an independent audit, we'll take the data we have on our streetlight system, do some math on which outfit looks good for the audit, but also, it looks good if we stuck with them all the way throughout. And we can just move forward with putting them under contract and getting the audit going.
Marie?
And how does that fit in with the surrounding communities who are interested in doing it with us?
Well, I, at first I thought there would be an economy of scale based on, you know, if we went out to bid on our own. But they can do this on their own. They can do this with us. They can do it on their own. There's no change in the pricing. The pricing is for every municipality and state. So, and I wasn't really fully aware that this was out there until I started researching this in a little more detail. So I think we would, you know, certainly, certainly for an audit, we can just go off, off the shelf, so to speak, with one of these firms. When it comes time to, I think, doing more of the purchasing and conversion, then I think we can engage with the communities. I'm not sure that there is an economy of scale. I talked to another vendor who said it won't make any difference, but I don't know if I believe all that either.
But then, I did, MAPC have 26 communities that did it together. 'Cause I was reading through the things that you were showing, and it showed that it was, they, 26 communities were part of that program out east.
Right. But now the pricing applies to everybody. So the 26 communities got together and did this, and that's why they get, I think, favorable response from these vendors. But now, any, I think, if you saw the email thread I forwarded, anybody, any municipality can just call this, one of these firms up, put them under contract and.
Piggyback on the, on the, on the pricing that the other communities agreed upon.
And as you, we would, this would be funded by our Green Communities Grant that we still have, that, you know, remains thus far.
I think it's still a good way to start working with the other communities on these projects. And like you said, it might not save us money, but still, work with each of them, and maybe if we start working on it together, and they're at the same level of the audits as we are when it comes time to actually bid out, then it would be, we would be able to work better as a group.
Sure. If we decide we're gonna move forward with this approach, I'll reach out to the other communities. I mean, you said, it's really, right now, it's, it's West Side and Springfield. East Long Meadow's a different utility provider.
No, in Agawam.
In Agawam, right. Sure.
Yeah, just, Marie, I just wouldn't want to see us wait back if, if they're six months or a year behind us. I think there's.
Oh, I think they're, they're lined up, especially Springfield's ready to go.
That's, that's fine, if, if they are. So Stephen, moving forward, is this gonna be based on a lowest bidder? Or is this gonna be, you know, how to, because your qualifier is the lowest bidder, but somebody we can move forward with if need be? And so I guess, that's only my, my only question of the, of the, I, I see five in the, in the listing here. I recognize names of two of them. Three of them, I have no idea.
Huge difference in price.
Yeah, there's gonna be, there's gonna be, like I said, we're gonna do some, we're gonna apply our data to these columns with the different things. And we'll have a range of who's gonna work better for us if we keep them the whole way through. The audit pricing, I think, is all, is pretty much all the same. Well, two, one's lower, one's higher, but the other two are right in the middle. We can look at what would it cost, and then, and then based on qualifications, we don't have to choose the lowest bidder. We can choose any of them.
Right. I'm, I'm just concerned we end up with somebody who gets us the data we want, so I, you know.
And, and by the way, we may just choose the, you know, the most cost-effective audit, and then decide we want to go with a different company for the other steps in the process.
So, I guess my question would be, can you check with these companies and say, if you don't do the audit, are you, when we come back and if we try to word the contract, are you gonna say, okay, but we gotta start and redo an audit of our own, 'cause it's only our data we believe?
That's in their spec. So, I did get the RFP. So I did get the RFP subsequent to the packet going out, and I'll send that out as a supplement, but my, my understanding from talking to the, actually, it's in the email thread from that Patrick, I forget the kid's last name, but he did address that in his, in my email chain, he asked me that specific question, and he said, no, you can do, any of these is a standalone task. Conceptually, you could do a different firm for each thing, I don't think we'd do that, but conceptually, I think he said you could do that.
Right. I'm, I'm just concerned, again, and I don't know this, that, that some company will say, well, that's all well and good, but if we're going to build it out, we, we need to do our own audit. So the build out is $27,000 more expensive because we didn't do the audit.
What I'm saying, Mark, is their agreement with MAPC doesn't allow them to do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
There's two deliverables I hope we get. One is, a lot of them talked about giving us a calculation, how much we're being overcharged.
Good luck.
Yep. That's one of the audits, that they, they do deliver that information. The second deliverable is whether we have the lights in the correct places or the correct number, because I know there's been a lot of discussion, because we keep throwing on one here, one there, and we just don't know if that's the most efficient layout that we should be having.
But that second part isn't part of an audit, that's part of a design.
Yeah.
The audit is strictly, what have we got? You know, we've got a 500-watt sodium vapor lamp that, on this pole, that's, that's the audit. And I, I know there were like 10 or 12 items that designated what that, what the item was that you wanted on the audit, but, but the second part, Marie, is, is, okay, and now what's the best design? You've got four lights on this stretch of road, and you really only need three lights on that stretch of road, or you've got six and you can only need five. I think that's part of the design process, right?
Yep.
So, and I would hope that we will ask that when the design process comes. Okay. Any other questions? So Stephen, we're going to kind of put this back on the agenda for a couple, two, three weeks, two, three meetings from now.
Are we going to move forward with an audit?
Do you want a motion?
We already, there was already a directive to go forward with an audit. It was, it was a motion by, to direct you.
I thought it was to report back on doing an audit, but I'm fine.
Yeah, we, actually, the, I think it was audit by the first of the year.
Right. It was to conduct an audit by the first of the year.
We'll, we'll hire any of these guys to do the audit.
We don't need any more votes, in my opinion.
Sounds good.
Okay, good. Let's move forward. Thank you. There's, there's an item on the agenda that, that we're not going to take any action on that says DPW has bestest change order. Stephen, but I'd like you to just mention why we're not taking any action on that.
So we received kind of late in the week, last week, the estimates for the two primary options, which is haul all of the material, which I think is around 10,000 tons, to Ohio, like we initially talked about. And then there was an estimate for hauling all of it to our former municipal Solways landfill down off of Bernie Road, Tina Lane. There is some cost associated with prepping that site for receiving this material, and in the estimate you received, it did not include the cost of capping, which would be a fairly significant amount over and above that. So the cost to go to Ohio was $4.2 million, based on the estimate we've received. And the cost to take it down, to dispose of it locally, was about 1.9 million, and the cap would be about another 600,000 on top of that. So 4.2 to haul it off-site, 2.5 to dispose of it locally, including a cap that we're, like we said before, it was supposed to be doing. So I think disposing as much of it as possible locally is going to be a better option for us, under both scenarios. But the engineers, both of Weston Sampson Colliers, wanted some time to look at, are there third options? How much could we keep on site? Are there ways through engineering, changing grades, things like that, that we could avoid the cost of hauling quite so much of it? Because a lot, these costs are, it's hauling, it's handling, hauling, and most of it, and then the, and then the environmental hygienist, which, I mean, there's a lot of work associated with that. The other thing is they're reviewing the line item pricing to see if these are good costs, and they just, because we got it late in the week, they just didn't have time, they haven't had time to go through this in a detailed way. So alternatively, the other thing we're doing is, we have, I think I had mentioned in a previous report, that there is money authorized in the capital bond bill, about 5.5 million to, from the state, to provide for capping of these, of the three landfills we have. And as I think I've said before, bond bill money isn't real money in that the governor has to do the, the actual borrowing to have it released, and that rarely happens with bond bills. We have engaged the governor's staff, as well as our legislative delegation, on the subject over the past few weeks, and we had been waiting till we received specific monetary information before we made our specific ask. So as of today, well, as of Friday and today, we have started to elevate that specific request to the governor's office through his Western Mass representative, have sent the information to our legislative delegation, so they could also reinforce the request. And that would certainly help out quite a bit if we were able to get just some of that money to help offset the cost of doing this process.
Thank you. So what we're going to do is, is schedule this for a next meeting, or if necessary, call a special meeting of the select board to try to take action on this, if necessary, to keep the project on schedule and take action on, on what's required. So I just want to keep everybody up to date on what's going on.
Yeah, I think the thing is, we want to have more options. I mean, I just want to, just to manage expectations, you know, we, we have to address this in some way, shape, or form. And so we want to be able to look at options and then provide funding options as well. Or just.
Okay, because we don't have appropriations. How much appropriations do we have left in discretionary?
We actually do have, between the contingencies and the bond authorization, that was, not all of the bond authorization was borrowed.
Right.
So we have additional bond authorization that we could use, and we remember, we never ended up doing it, but I remember we talked about this, the high school project at the end. We had bond authorization to get more if we needed it. We didn't, I don't think, did we end up, did we borrow the money? We did a ban, didn't we?
With the high school, we authorized borrowing 78 million.
Right.
Because they required us to, but we never, we only borrowed like 44.
But at the end of it, we needed.
We needed a couple hundred thousand.
We needed a couple hundred thousand, so we used some of, I don't know if we ended up using that, that bond authorization, but we, that bond authorization was there as a source for the additional funds we needed. We do have that in this case. I think what we're trying to do is avoid having to do that, because part of, there is money appropriated and approved, not appropriated, but money authorized by the state, and we've, we've identified to the state that it's essential that they help us out with this.
Yeah, Marie?
Do we need conservation involved with this?
They are.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, we have that, we're doing that.
It has been presented to them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Stephen, thank you. Just keep us up to date and we'll.
Again, I think, I think every, the, our team, our project team wanted to have better information for the board tonight to make a decision. I mean, and this is going back to the change or delegation policy. Many times, these decisions are very time-sensitive, and so the reason why having a subcommittee of the permanent building committee is, they don't need 48 hours, they don't need to schedule meetings, post the 48 hours, they can make decisions in real time, which is essential on some of these, in some of these moments for the project. But that's why we're going to ask for a special meeting, because it is crucial that we know what we're doing here in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is complete street sidewalk discussion. I think there's some folks in the DPW here to talk about this. This specifically is the, is the crosswalk that goes between the community house and the first church that crosses William Street. There was a discussion at our earlier select board meeting, and I'm saying a month or six weeks ago, about potentially making that into something a little bit different from what we've done in the past, and so we've had the DPW take another look at it. And Mario, if you want to introduce yourself and your guests, then we'll talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, sure. This is Brett Purchases from Gomes Construction, and so after that meeting, Gomes is the contractor who's doing that work out there. We reached out to Brett and said, we'd like to look at some alternatives to adjust the crossing to some of the ideas that you guys kicked around at that meeting. So Brett has done this in a lot of different places, all three or four options that we presented to you, and he kind of gave us the, the cost for what it would be to, to install them, as well as, you know, in some cases, how long it takes, you know, for construction, how long the road has to be out of service, and things like that. And that's, that's really why I wanted him to come tonight, is if you have questions on the specifics of the construction piece of it, hopefully he can answer that, and then with any luck, we can have a decision tonight on which option is the best, and we can continue construction.
So before we go forward with options, what was it that, if you could best describe, what was it you would, you would have planned to do, or you were planning to do?
The original bid went out as a raised sidewalk with asphalt in the middle, and asphalt ramps going up with striping to indicate that there was an incline there. And that was presented to you, like you said, Mark, I don't know, three weeks ago, at least a couple meetings. And the discussion at that time was, you know, it's our town center, it's next to the green historic district, what else is out there? And so that's really where we kind of got to these options. Does that answer your question?
Exactly. So it was, it was a raised sidewalk, all out of asphalt, and differentiated through paint.
Yes.
And it was, whatever paint it was that you would typically use.
Not all that different than what's here at that school.
The original? Okay, thank you.
So what's here at the high school, which, what part? In front of the high school?
Right. When you go through the horseshoe, if you will, the extension of, is that Willett? Was that the original street name of it?
One, two, three.
Anyway, sorry if I throw you off with that, because I'm not even positive of the name of it, but yes, if you drive the horseshoe and you see the raised sidewalks there, you'll notice.
Are they white stripes?
There are white stripes on the incline, I don't remember if there are any on the decline.
And the.
There are.
And the side, because I don't have, I, we see pictures of the other possibilities, but I don't remember if there was a picture of what it will look like now. So would it be white stripes like we usually see on some of the streets, big white stripes that cross?
That was the original.
That was the original?
Yes.
With the arrows?
The stripes end up making it look like arrows, because they come.
Because they come like this?
As you approach, there'll be a sequence of increasing size arrows as you approach each crosswalk and trajectory. A little bigger on, and then right in the middle, you'll have the crosswalks.
So, and the people at home can't hear Andy. So basically, if you think of the entrance to Long Meadow High School, there is a raised crosswalk. And as you approach, there's several raised crosswalks, as you approach them, there are painted arrows on the driveway announcing that you're going to hit a bump, and then there are crossing, crosswalk stripes going across it. It's essentially the same thing.
So, Tom, go ahead.
The, the price on that, with that, because this one, you know, gives us a price per, you know.
Per linear foot.
Per square linear foot.
If you look, I did the math, or I, Andy did the math, I passed it along to you. I, I don't know the, and I don't know if you can recall, that number was part of the original bid, so it wasn't really called out in a specific way, like these are, these are in addition to the specific bid, so.
So these are supplemental costs, Tom. What you're seeing here are additional costs.
That, that option is zero for the first business of this discussion.
Pretty much, zero.
These other options are plus zero, or on top of zero plus what the amount is.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I mean, my personal opinion is, I think what you've described and what we had is consistent with what else is around the town. You know, our other major walkways are at the high school, at our elementary schools, and at the area of the shops. I think we've been consistent with, to the extent that we have what I'll call raised crosswalks. We've done that certainly at the entry to the shops. So, you know, I'm, I'm good with where you are, but I, this was a sense of the five-person body, so.
One of the reasons, can I interject for a second? One of the reasons we asked Brett to be here is because he has more experience with the construction, the installation of these, and some familiar with, with their long-term maintenance, and, I mean, he's not going to advocate for one treatment or another, it's our choice, but, you know, we kind of went through some pros and cons of each one. And, I mean, we could tell you, we talked about it internally, and I know, at least, I know I have a, an option that I want to recommend, but if you wanted to ask about the specifics of each one, we, you know, he came, he ruined a Monday night just to be here with us, so I'll just make it worth his while.
Stephen, I think it's worth noting for the people at home, that the supplemental costs, and the, people can't see the, the pictures, but it's a, they're pavers, whether they're brick pavers one way, brick pavers another way, or brick pavers a third way, they're, in essence, they, I think the local cost is for a brushed brick finish, 17,795 supplemental, all the way up to 22,700 supplemental for, for brick crosswalks. I think that's, those are the documents that we're looking at.
Just for, and for people at home, and for, for your benefit, I, we don't have any of these in town that I'm aware of. We don't have a single, like stamped, crosswalk in the entire community. We were in East Long Meadow for a meeting, and I observed that they did have them in the library where they're, or the parking lot where the library is, they do have some of these treatments, if you can think about that. I think some of the, I think some other communities do have some of these, which means, if we're trying to come up with a standard, we will be starting from scratch on this one, add, I think, additional maintenance and installation costs as we went forward with this.
Yeah, most of them are intolerant to ice melt, and.
Certainly some of them are, others wear more heavily where the tire tracks are, those can't be fixed, you kind of really have to take everything up and then do it all again.
How about snowplow?
I don't know if you have any informa, I don't know that answer.
The, the ones that have the border on them, which they would all have granite concrete, granite bounds to the right and left of them, that is to deal with the snowplow issues that come up with this, it gives it a hard edge, and that's really the only, Mass DOT recommends it, and it's the, what happens in New England.
That doesn't sound really enthusiastic, Brett, about the effect of.
I think they all, they all have the pros and cons, like Mario said, they all have pluses and minuses on each one of them, and I don't think there's one that's, you know, going to hit the, hit the board for every, every plus, or one that's going to hit the board for every minus. They're, they're all each individual pieces.
Tom?
Well, the, of course, the ones with concrete wouldn't make sense, because we do salt on roads, you know? And then if you look at the, this thermoplastic, and I know it would, it would vary based on how much traffic, I mean, so I guess any estimate of how long, like if we had it on, you know, crossing from like the first church to the community house, I think it's a reasonable amount of traffic, I think, you know, how long would it last there? If we had it crossing Long Meadow Street, you know, how long would it last in a place like that? Any.
So Long Meadow Street obviously would be much shorter. I know Andy called another community that had that installation, did they tell you how long roughly it lasted?
Yeah, I mean, in general, it'll last a very, very long time. It depends on how much you can stand or where.
Did they give you a number of years?
The one that was installed in Pittsfield was about four years, around seven.
So to repeat for folks at home, about four years it lasted, before it started.
And it hasn't, they're still happy with it.
And that's right on West Street in Pittsfield, or like the main street?
I think, if you think of the East Long Meadow Plaza with the library, I don't, I think that project was fairly recent. When they say they last a long time, the indentations, the stamping certainly does, and you can tell that it's textured different than the pavement, but the treatment is faded in different areas, and so they don't, you know, keep their consistent color, I don't think, for, for like a long time.
Yeah, Marie, you were, you were one of the driving forces behind this request, so I'm going to let you ask some questions, Mike.
Because it was the historic district. It wasn't saying, we're going to standardize this across town, but this is our historic green. And I know you're saying the colors fade, well, the colors fade too on the stripes that we're going to be painting and the arrows.
Absolutely.
But what I didn't understand, and I guess after you, it says disadvantages, no texture. What do you mean by that?
Well, that's, that's not Brett's work, that's DPW's work.
Oh, that's your work. Oh, that's your work.
Texture, some of the imprinted pavement, if you imagine if you were in Springfield before they redid the roadways, the imprinted pavement had no texture to it, it was just imprinted and then a smooth surface. This thermoplastic, correct me if I'm wrong, has a texture to it, so, you know, between the bricks, so to speak, there's a.
Andy, sit next to Brett.
Okay, that's what I thought, because it says no texture, but it looked like there was texture. Okay. Now, I know there's a tendency now to put those yellow bumps for.
For ADA requirements.
So would we still be doing those with this?
Absolutely, at the end of the sidewalk, not over the crossing.
Not over the crossing, but the end of the sidewalk, we'd still have those.
Right.
All right, because that's one of the reasons I was saying this, this historic district. I, I would have to go out and look and see what's over here at the high school, I don't go to the high school, so. But I, I think it's worth it for us to consider and even talk to the historic district people to see how they feel, what, what we're going to agree to do with our historic area. But another question I have, and I'm not sure if you'd be able to answer that, or if we need the chief to answer it, is, is there a safety, is one less safe than the other? Because this is a very high-trafficed area for our children.
I wouldn't be able to answer that.
You have no idea on how that works. Okay. And you said insulation costs, it says three-day closure. How long do we close for our regular sidewalk that you were going to put in?
Sidewalk?
The crosswalk.
Oh, that's probably just a few hours. It's the asphalt cooling, and then sometime later we'd come back and paint it, so.
But you have a problem, you already said that you won't be able to do this, in other words, it's going to happen during the school year.
Right.
Because you didn't have the granite.
Now, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a decision tonight on this.
We need a decision tonight on this. And now, if the, if we go with the extra twenty-two thousand, that's what you're saying it would be, is that outside complete streets?
Yes.
Okay, so complete streets, right now we got how much?
Two hundred and two thousand is my memory.
Two hundred and two thousand. And this crosswalk with that, with the complete streets, was going to cost how much?
With one of these other options? Oh.
With the original option?
Two twenty or two twenty-six.
Yeah, we're already outside.
Two twenty?
Right.
Wow. And the one near the high school was going to be?
Sorry, the one near the high, they're together.
Oh, so both of these would be two twenty. Okay, and complete streets gave you how much?
I believe it was two oh two.
Two oh two. So we're still going to be eighteen over?
At base, if we add one of these options plus.
And Stephen, where was the extra eighteen going to come from?
We thought we'd probably use that from either our resurfacing budget or Chapter Ninety funds.
We have highway, we have sidewalk funds. All right, Marie, I hate to push you along here, but I think it's kind of decision time. I don't know if there's, I will just state from my perspective, I think the proposal we had is not just adequate, but appropriate for the location, and certainly spending an additional funding to do this and something that will add, potentially add to costs down the road for resurfacing it, certainly might cause problems during snowplowing where we'd have to add to repairs if we start hitting this thing with our plows and damaging our plows. I, I think it was worth taking a look at, but I don't think it's worth moving forward. It's my personal opinion. So unless somebody wants to make a motion, I'm going to just thank Mario and Brett for their comments. Anybody want to move forward with?
I really like some of these, but you know, if they don't hold, if they don't hold up to ice melt, I mean, and they wear out and they're expensive to replace and they're.
Yeah, there's a lot of negatives to it. It's like anything else, if you had unlimited budgets and streets and repairs, we pave all the cobblestones down for all the streets and throw ourselves into these small European communities. Anyway, Marie, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Reluctantly?
Reluctantly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brett, thank you very much. Mario, I appreciate it, and I know there's a little, a lot of work to end up not making any changes, but I think we answered our questions for us. We appreciate that.
I'd also like to add for the record that I agree with a lot of Marie's concerns about the historic zone, and I would, I would hope that somebody will take this and push it further for the replacement cycle on this. Because I don't think the historic zone comes down to just dollars. I think there's a far greater umbrella there, and I think it deserves a little further research.
I guess, agreed. I mean, we did spend time, I started, I spent some time thinking about the design aesthetic.
Yeah.
There are no brick sidewalks virtually anywhere in this town, so there's not even like a historic brick, it's got to have some context and some feet, I mean, I'm the biggest advocate for streetscape, and every municipality I've worked in, I've tried to advance streetscaping plans and look at things like this, but it would stick out like a sore thumb, that's completely out of context with everything around it.
But if it's anything like the real cannonball circuit in the world up here, I imagine cobblestones at one time played a significant story in our community.
Yeah, I think.
And we moved away from cobblestones. We know Long Meadow Street, likely was cobblestone before it was concrete.
Right.
So we've kind of moved away for simplicity and whatever, and if, I sort of believe, if you're going to have a historic zone, treat it as a historic zone, it's a special zone in our community. And we have what, nationwide famous green. It's quite a resource we have.
Green cobblestones, is that what you're saying?
No, but I still think, Stephen, and you agree, I don't, you're not disagreeing.
I completely agree with you, 100% agree with you.
I think it needs a little bit more talk, and I think we kind of brush this off every time it gets in front of here, and I think that's unfair to brush it off. I think it's unfair to brush it off with cost, because there's things that are bigger than cost, and this is one of them. It's the historic nature of our community is demonstrated on the green. I mean, we have people in here that take hours of our time talking about the green and trying to same zoning, so it is an important issue in our community.
I agree.
I relinquish my soapbox. Thank you, Marie.
And just to add to that, we have talked about wanting to be involved with streetscape, and so I think that when we come up with more projects for the green, instead of just coming in like this is, it was just, oh, this is what we've designed, I think we'd like to have a little say before we move further down the road, because right now we're, we're up against a time limit. I would have preferred to be able to take something like this, taking it to the historic district, getting people's feedback on it. But at this point, I don't want to hold up the project, and I think it's a matter of safety issues, so that's why I'm going to go ahead with this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. While we're on streets, I'd like to jump to a Big Y street cut request for trucks. For the folks at home, as people know, Big Y, which is over at the intersection of Bliss and William Street, and actually, there's a triangle formed by Bliss, it's called Bliss Court, where the tennis courts are, at that triangle, is being renovated. And in the past, delivery trucks to Big Y, although they've been limited in the hours they're supposed to be delivering, literally closed down parts of William Street as they attempt to, or actually do, back into the Big Y's deliveries area there. And so as part of this renovation, the Big Y has proposed through our DPW that they put a curb cut on Bliss Court. So as you're traveling, I believe that is south on Bliss Court, which is toward the package store, the state, yeah, no, not towards the Long Meadow Shop, it's away from.
Travel team Bliss Road and William Street on Bliss Court.
Right.
Which is one way south.
One way south. You would be able to, if you will, pull into the left only as trucks to then make it easier for them to back into the system. There's actually a diagram in the, in the package that we were sent, and because it's an additional road cut, we've been asked to approve that road cut. So I guess my question is, are there any comments or questions, and then a motion? Stephen, were you going to?
Just to add briefly, this was something, the Big Y had been discussing plans for renovation from, with the town for a couple of years. They started off with a much different project than they ended up with, but that started us off in a dialogue about that triangle. And starting in October, there'll be a study facilitated by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission of the entire triangle area. And we've talked about doing tree lightings, or working with the three property owners, three main property owners, and doing some streetscaping there as a part of our longer-term, even not long-term, shorter-term vision for this. So this plan, I zoomed in on this, including the packets, it was easy to see, but there was a larger plan that shows some of the ideas we have that aren't quite ready for primetime yet. But this was something that the Big Y really kind of latched on to immediately as a concept they liked. I will tell you, the fire chief is not here, but he has said that there's been, you know, there have been occasions where they're trying to get to say JGS, or, you know, some other site on the other side of town, and there's a, you know, a tractor trailer driver who's new to the area trying to get in there blocking William Street. And so this will, I get, I would assume this will eliminate that, but it'll certainly greatly reduce the need for trucks to pull across William Street, block it, and back in. It's a pretty easy thing, Big Y, I believe, is going to pay for it, that they're going to pay for the installation of it, just wanted permission to do the cut.
Tom?
Well, the only thing is, given the fact that really no one needs to use that sidecut.
I'm sure it'll be authorized vehicles only.
Yeah, authorized trucks only.
I don't know if it's been, if we've talked to Big Y about that, but I'm sure it's, you know, the intent is for truck traffic.
It's actually dangerous the way it is now, isn't it?
It's very dangerous.
Yeah, it's dangerous, but I mean, I would think that if other people were using that, that can become dangerous, they come around that corner, cars are parked, so, yeah, I would support it if it was marked clearly, you know, delivery trucks only.
That's fine. Any other comments? So look for a motion to approve the curb cut on Bliss Court for the Big Y.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Low and seconded by Mr. LaCusa. Any other comments? And Tom, I think we'd like to put into it your constraints that it's limited to delivery vehicles only.
Yep.
To the extent that we can do that?
Yeah. Zoom.
Well, you know, I think we ought to make that as part of the motion, that it is limited to delivery vehicles only. Okay? Any other comments? All those in favor? And you oppose, the vote passes five to zero. So thank you, Marie.
Before we leave this, so you're working on a streetscape for the whole area? If you could keep us in the loop on how that works.
Yeah, like I said, we're starting with the traffic study. Like I said, working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and as we get, as we get deeper into it, we'll provide some updates.
And then also, someone made a comment to me about the red roof of the Big Y gas station, how it really jarring compared to the rest of the thing. And all of a sudden, I thought, oh my gosh, is Big Y going to have another red roof with a whole new building? Is, does the planning commission get color schemes?
They do.
They don't.
They don't.
I thought they did.
They do, but they, they don't have like a color palette they choose from, it's not.
Well, I know what.
In a historic district, you could do that.
No, I heard, I remember when they were doing the shops on the side where Killiwink's is right now, I remember they came and they were showing palettes on what they were going to do, but I mean, this, this bright red really just is very jarring. So as town manager, would you keep an eye out on what sort of color schemes are coming out of that?
So bright red crosswalks, okay, bright red roof.
No, it's more of a mahogany.
Right, right. So you can see the subjective nature of this, it makes it unregulated.
But Shaker, Shaker, Ohio, Shaker Heights, their McDonald's was not allowed to be the bright red, but I think it would be very jarring to have a bright red.
We don't have those bylaws in place, seriously.
No, but you can always, so I'll mention it to the planning board, they get to see colors. Thanks.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to sign, it says sign the fall town meeting warrant, but I'd like to, once again, just go through the warrant articles, just to make sure everybody's okay with this. Just, we did this at, I believe it was two meetings ago, it might have been the last meeting, it was last meeting, Paul, and we, we eliminated some of them. Current warrant proposed, as proposed is, I believe it's eight articles, is that what it is? Seven, eight? Ten articles, sorry. Okay, ten articles. And Article One is, is funds from, transfer funds from Solid Waste Enterprise Fund for the purposes of paying bills of prior year. I'm going to assume that nobody has any, any questions about that, or it's self-sufficient, and it's prior bills, okay? So Article One, any comments? We did not vote to approve these articles the last time, and so I'm going to accept the motion to approve Article One.
Some of them.
Is there a second? Motion's made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. LaCusa. Any comments? All those in favor of Article One, vote passes five to zero. Okay? Article Two, Article Two is to see if town will raise an appropriate four-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars also for paying prior bill. It's part of our, I guess it was personnel costs. Any comment?
Move to accept Article Two?
Great. Article Two's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. LaCusa, seconded by Mr. Low. Any other comments? All in favor? Motion passes, Richard, five to zero. Thank you. Article Three is.
Article Three is new.
Thank you, Mr. Posen.
It's something that was discovered since the last time that we've met, dealing with the way that we've set up the bond authorization and the use of premiums. It goes back to the Municipal Modernization Act from November of two thousand and sixteen, where we subsequently approved the DPW and actually the Council on Agent Bonds. But anyway, the DPW bonds, we actually went out and we received, it was structured so that we could receive a large premium, or a premium, and we did not borrow the full authorization. So what this would allow us to do is to actually authorize the use of that premium, so that the use of the premium plus the amount that we actually authorized to borrow would equate to the amount authorized, the original twenty-two million. So it would now equate to, the project cost would equate to exactly what Town Meeting had authorized. It also, and this is something we may not want to discuss, it also then takes the amount of that premium that was, that we didn't use of the authorization, and it reduces the authorization so that we can no longer borrow additional funds. So the amount that we're borrowing actually still remains the amount that was originally presented to Town Meeting.
Paul, how can we put this in a language that, I mean, I knew what this was, you'd explained it to me, and I read not only the article, which is worded the way it needs to be, but more importantly, the explanation, and couldn't make a sense, you know, from a layperson's point of view of what this is. I mean, because, let me see if I feed you back correctly. This is an administrative correction to our prior bond authorization, number one, right? And I think people need to understand that. Secondly, it takes our prior bond authorization, if you will, and splits it into two separate approvals, one for bonding and one for the premium, is that correct?
It authorizes the premium to be used towards the project.
Okay, but, so, but, and if that's the case, then it needs to say authorize. I guess from what I'm reading, that's why the explanation was difficult for me to describe, and what I don't want to do is get to a situation where we end up with people saying, we're not borrowing any more money, we've already borrowed money, I've heard about the asbestos, is this just something you're trying to put through? You know, I think people need to understand this, an administrative correction to our prior bond authorization is not authorizing any additional funds in total, because I believe that's exactly the case.
Actually, it delimits to the original authorization.
Then I think it needs to say that, because my fear is, what happens if this were not to pass? And we can't afford for it not to pass because we haven't been clear on demonstrating to people that it's not authorizing additional funds, but rather, if you will, just allowing us to handle the premium in a different manner.
Wouldn't it be better to explain that on the floor?
Well, I think we can, but, but I think there needs to be something at least in the, in the explanation, Richard. I mean, clearly, we've got to stand up there and say it's an administrative correction and there's no additional funding, but be prepared to do that, Marie.
Would you be happy if we started the explanation with this is administrative correction on previous action?
Absolutely, but I, you know, I want to leave it to everybody to see how we do it, and just give you feedback that I think it needs to include some, some of that as a clarity to this.
I mean, I can try to rework that.
The explanation?
The explanation.
Because I understand the wording was pretty much set by a bond council.
Right, the wording came right from bond council.
Right. So, all right. Marie, is that, because I know you had, you would.
Yeah, you do the administrative correction, then I started to flow down in understanding it better.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we're also actually, a part of this is eliminating that unused authorization that we did not use because we had the premium. So you just want to make sure that's in there right now.
And it, you know, I don't know that it says that in that explanation at this point, but, anyway, with that, with that change in explanation, the article, the warrant article and motion stands as it is. Stephen, were you going to?
Accepts, and, well, let me say this, I think it should stand as is, but based, based, and hopefully, things will work out with the state. But this may, I may recommend to amend that on the floor to not remove the, the additional, the full authorized amount. Because this basically gives back bond authorization that was approved as a part of the original DPW vote.
So, while we're uncertain, why are we doing that, then?
I, because this was written before we had the problem.
Well, then, but now we have the problem, so maybe we ought not do that.
There, there, and, and basically, in A1 and A2, there's a, at the end of those, of sections, it says, "And to reduce the amount authorized for such projects by the same amount." That would eliminate that excess authorization that we still have in our books. If we took that out, it would, it would leave that excess authorization on our books if we wanted to borrow more money for the DPW.
Seems to me we need to do that.
Borrow more money within the authorization.
Within the original authorization. I think we ought to leave that out. It's my opinion.
It couldn't, it couldn't hurt. I mean, we never, hopefully, we never have to, to borrow the additional money.
And, and in the past, Paul, we've gone back, I mean, like in the, in the high school project. It was a year and a half later, we went back and reduced the authorization, so...
Absolutely. And, and, but I would assume in the second part, which is the Dwight Road development, we would not want to reduce it.
No.
Fine.
But it would just be in part A.
You mean not eliminate that?
Right, right. Again, there's, in the last part of 1A, it says, "And to reduce the amount authorized for such projects by the same amount," referring to the 1.3, 4, or $5 million worth of premium. We would eliminate that.
So, you're talking about making changes now from this warrant article?
As we discuss this, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we ought to. I'm going to, I'd like to see us strike through that part and say this, that, that A2 will be, uh, be appropriate $110,000 from premium paid to the town upon issuance of the bonds for the Dwight Road Improvement District Infrastructure. Oh, no, I'm sorry. A2 stays. It's A1 that says.
It's the end of A1.
Right.
"And to reduce the amount authorized for such project by the same amount" would be, would be eliminated.
Right.
There would be no other changes to this whole thing, just that one?
There would be no other changes until we got to the explanation.
And Mark, you want to say this is an administrative correction?
I, I think it, we need to tell, indicate that it's an administrative correction based on the bond premium process. Okay, so, so it's, it's going to read, the first three lines will read, "To see if the town will vote to A1 appropriate $1,345,000 from the premium paid to the town upon the issuance of the bonds for the Department of Public Works facility project issued on August 28, 2018, to pay costs of such capital project, period." A2, appropriate $110,000, and then moves on from there.
So, I move to approve Article three with the striking of the line after capital project under A1 and adding administrative correction language to the explanation.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any other discussions? All those in favor? Okay, vote passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, article, proposed Article four is also a, uh, it's appropriation for, it's community preservation. It's an annual categorization of the community preservation funds into different buckets as required by state law. Is that fair?
Correct.
Is there a motion, is there a motion to, it's not raising any money, it's just moving money?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Low. Any other comments? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Article five is, uh, is to raise and appropriate from available funds, uh, amounts from this sources listed below to pay, to cover debt service on the new DPW facility. Paul, if you can just give an explanation of why this is included as a raise and appropriate, if you don't mind?
Well, it's raised, again, it, it was a debt exclusion. So, from the fact that we're within the general fund, we are authorized to raise that through taxation. Within the water and the sewer funds, um, we did not make amends for it, um, within the, uh, within the rates that we set. So, for those first year bond, um, debt service, those would have to be coming out of the sewer or the water retained earnings account.
And the purpose of this is the vote by the select board that authorized the bond repayment schedule that includes repayments, partial repayment beginning in fiscal year 2019, and therefore, we've got to raise the money to pay that bond in fiscal year 2019.
And the majority of this is interest, but there is a small, there is a small amount of, uh, principal.
Okay. Stephen, Stephen, I'm sorry.
Not related to the, the content of the article. I think, if I could recommend the organization of the warrant, I think three, five should be four. Move this behind the bond premium vote, because I think as we present this information to town meeting, we want to make it clear at the outset that the next two articles do not increase the, you know, do not increase the amount that town meeting approved for the DPW, do not increase the cost of the project, none of that stuff. These are just administrative actions, um, based on things and that, we can kind of update them on everything else. But I think if we say that, introduce both articles, with that one heading, we don't have to do it twice.
I, I have no objections to that. I think that's an administrative change. Feel free to do that as the article gets, uh, as, as, as the warrant is published. Does anybody, I don't think we need a motion for that, Stephen. Go ahead and do it. It's a good art, good idea. Okay?
Move to approve?
Yeah, a motion to approve Article five made by Mrs. Angelides. Any?
Second.
Mr. Foster, seconded. Any other comments? All in favor? Vote passes five zero. Thank you. Article six.
Article six deals with our, uh, we have an estimated free cash amount roughly of $775,000. The select board has a policy to transfer, um, any amount above $500,000 in free cash at the fall town meeting, once everything is balanced, in the operational stabilization fund. Um, theoretically, I could change this to 775, except it's just still an estimate. We could maybe make that amendment on the floor at town meeting, once the exact free cash is certified. I've just put in 250,000 at this point in time.
Well, I, I assume that on the town meeting floor, you will have the...
Yes. Everything has, um, has gone to the Department of Revenue. We'll probably have that free cash by sometime early next week.
A motion we approve for Article six.
And is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Low. All in favor? Vote passes five zero. Thanks for the explanation, Paul. Article seven is, uh, another raise and appropriate for $130,000 for health insurance and liability insurance. Paul, if you can just explain that?
Yeah, each, each one of those accounts ended up in the, in the red for the closeout of FY18. Um, for the most part, you may recall that we actually do the appropriation by function. They were actually covered by excess funds in certain other accounts within the function. But, um, what I'd like to do is be able to get those, so they're not in the red at the end of FY19. Um, so I'm asking that the town supplement those budgets at this point in time, so we don't run into a problem for next year. Overall, we did have a, an overall debt deficit within, within the function of, uh, roughly about $2,000. Um, you know, right away that I know the, um, the liability insurance account, it went up within the FY19 budget by $35,000. However, I have already witnessed costs going up in the liability insurance account by over $70,000.
Questions for Mr. Pusterzik?
Is this a new article? Or is this, huh?
No, no.
Last time?
This was aired last time.
This is the last, okay.
Are you all set?
Yeah.
Reluctantly, yes.
There's, there's no, is the liability because of the accidents we've had in town? The increased liability?
Uh, when you say accidents, it, it's, it's, yeah. I mean, we're not having great experience when it comes to our, our property insurance. And, uh, we've had some rough years when it came to police and fire injury on duty, um, costs that have driven up those premiums quite a bit over the last three and four years.
And the health insurance? Is there any way we can start to mitigate those increase? Or is this something we should be seeing now for every year going forward?
Well, I, I mean, we can start to mitigate, but I mean, that's something that would be futuristic at this point in time. The, the premiums for FY19 were already set, so it's not something that we can really mitigate at this point in time, but it would, we have to be taken up at the Scandic Valley level moving forward. Um, you know, again, we ended up last year in the, in the deficit. We did have an increase in the budget, but, you know, we also had increases in those premiums. I just, I'm kind of just looking forward. I don't want to end up at the end of FY19 in the same position.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve Article seven?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Lucusa. Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting Article seven? Passes five to zero. Article eight, we've got to wait for Mr., our Police Chief Stankowitz to join us. John?
Yes.
Article eight is for the purchase of, uh, six in-car video systems for police, the police department. And so, uh, this was listed on the preliminary warrant that we talked the last time, and there were some questions that arose. And so, you're on, John. Go ahead. Go for it. Thanks, Richard.
Um, yeah, we're looking to purchase six in-car video, um, uh, systems for each of our line cars. Um, as a matter of fact, um, there, there is also a grant available through Maya, which will be, what this is, let me, let me back up here. I'm looking for five in-car video systems. Um, there's, Maya's offering a grant, and I'm also going to apply for a grant to get the six video system through them, um, if, if funds are raised and appropriated for this. Um, in-car video systems, I don't think I have to go into too much detail, other than if you watch, uh, if you watch the news in the evening, if you go onto YouTube, you see these, uh, videos being taken all the time and utilized, um, in order to, um, document what is trans, what is happening on the street with the officer, and it documented, memorializes that. Um, and, uh, that information is utilized, uh, for, um, both, um, training of an officer. It's used for evidence gathering. It's used for courtroom testimony. Um, so those things are, um, provided to those, um, those are, things are provided, um, so that we can document, um, what is trans, what is, uh, happening on the street. Um, the in-car video system we're looking for is a dash mounted camera, and it's a panoramic view. And it captures, there's certain triggers which capture, um, which starts the process of recording. Some of those triggers include, um, activation of lights. Um, if the vehicle, cruiser vehicle, um, exceeds 50 or 55 miles an hour, you dictate what the speed is, where that would be activated. Also in that, also in the vehicle is a rear marked, mounted camera, which captures, um, what happens in the backseat and the rear seat. So, if you have a prisoner, that, that information, that's documented too. Um, spontaneous utterances, conversations in the cabin, um, any allegations of misconduct, um, that someone is going to allege toward an officer, is all documented and can be played back. And that is, and again, that information, um, has proven to be, and reduce liability on, on the department. Uh, what we have seen in the past, we have captured, um, individuals who made allegations of officers. It doesn't happen that often. Um, but fortunately, we've had, um, video footage, both, uh, within our public safety complex, we have video footage, um, as well as that's being documented, as well as, uh, there's, uh, businesses in our community that also memorialize or, uh, docu, have video as cameras as well. So, what this is, is proven is that, um, when there's allegations made against an officer of officer misconduct, or, um, use of force claims, misuse of force claims, um, that we're able to play that back and, um, indicate. And what this does is show that the officer is exonerated. Um, and it does reduce, um, our, it does reduce, um, internal investigations that we have to be involved in too. This is, this is a benefit to the, the town, reduces liability. Um, we had a meeting with our risk management representative today from Maya. Um, she's all in favor of it. She sees a major benefit to having these for a risk management standpoint. But it also assists the officers in, um, being able to see how they perform their job and, um, protect the town as well.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions?
Do you have any capability for live stream?
Um, right now, there, there isn't, no. Yes, we would have the capability to do that, but we wouldn't be looking at doing that right now.
Okay. How about with the central dispatch, Stephen? Is that something of consideration?
I, I don't know from dash cam, but certainly from our, um, we, we'll connect to our existing security system, like the, the station, the, the camera points around the, the public safety complex. And so, we will be able to connect directly to those cameras in our public safety complex from the regional dispatch. As a part of the regional dispatch effort, but also separate and apart from that, uh, the chief and the, and the school department are in the process of putting together a broader, um, camera deployment plan for the community. And so, I think that's more one of those things, um, live streaming from, if I hear what you're saying, we are trying to work towards that as a part of a broader security system, broader network for the town.
Right. Can I have one?
Sure, go ahead.
Other question. Do we have body cams?
No, we don't. Um, right now, the technology is still new. Um, and this would be a precursor to that, until we improve our technology. And the backend of storage for that is, um, too costly at this point, until they come down with the prices on that. Something I'd like to do, something we do in the future, I know that. Um, as, as technology starts decreasing cost, storage increases, decreases in cost too, that, that's something we'll probably implement. I don't know how soon, but it'll be within the next five.
Then there's only grant possibilities for one unit, though?
There's only grant possibilities for one unit at this time, yes.
Marie?
Will this decrease our costs for insurance? They say insurance companies like it, and Maya likes it. Are they going to give us a, cut us a break?
Well, I don't know if they're, they're going to cut us a break, but, um, we do check off one of the boxes, um, as far as our points go. How does that work?
Well, there's, we would get points on the rewards program, so we would get a, a small amount.
But has there been any, has there been an increase in, um, A and B on police officers with cameras like this? Because there's probably a lot of abuse, you know, where police officers would get hit, and, and it was harder to prove. But do the cameras, you know, is there any, like when you read journals, does it show any significant difference, or?
There's an increase. It, it de-escalates, um, interaction. It decreases, decreases the number of assaults that police officers encounter, um, because a lot of times when you tell the suspect or subject that, um, you are being recorded, it tends to, uh, they tend to be on better behavior as well.
Yeah.
And they have, they have studies that indicate that as well.
Yeah. Well, because that's an important part, because we want our employees to be safe on the job, obviously.
Yeah.
And, and you mentioned about use of force, and of course, uh, appropriate use of force, you know, is one thing, and inappropriate is another, and, um, so...
And even if it's something that's inappropriate, inappropriate use of force is something that is a violation of our policy. I mean, we want to be totally transparent and, uh, transparent with our community. And if there's, and if there's flaws in our system, we need to address those. So, we provide the proper law enforcement to our community as well.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief, I have, Bill, do you have any?
No.
I just have a couple of questions, Chief. One is, uh, you know, the storage of the, of the video and the records, how, how's that being handled? And where's the cost of that associated with, with this purchase? And how's that get rolled in?
Uh, Nick, um, Nick from IT says we are perfectly capable of handling this storage that we have now, the storage capacity that we have now. Um, because you're really not documenting that much. You download, when you come in off a shift at the end of the day, you download that storage. You don't, or download that, um, you capture that video and download it. It's really not storing that much, um, information, because after 14 days, um, it just rewrites itself. So, it's only on those motor vehicle stops, on those, um, the, when you activate those triggers, such as the overhead lights, or when you increase speeds above 50 miles an hour. And according to Nick, we're a T expert, he says that we're perfectly fine with the amount of storage.
So, we're going to do our own in-house storage, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Now, that, that's fine. I assume that somebody's going to be developing policies, procedures, whatever, around that. The, the other question is, it really gets the heart of the, the request here. One is, you know, normally, this would go through, uh, what I'll call a more formal budgeting process during the, during the formal budget year. It would get, I, I think it'd be part of your, your operating budget. It's, it's not capital from our capital plan, so it'd be some supplemental thing. Why is the need of this coming up now, and why not in our normal budget cycle? That's question A. And question B is, you know, what if we were only fund four of these, or three of these, instead of six?
The, the issue is when we start, when we only deploy three or four of these units, and there's, uh, six officers on the street, or excuse me, five officers on the street, um, and only five units available. Um, two of those officers aren't going to have access to that. And there is going to be deficiencies. And all I can think of is that in the event there is litigation, it's going to be those officers who don't have those units that are, um, are, who are going to be affected. Um, and why not, if we're going to, if we're going to build a system, let's put a system in there that we're, that everybody is protected, that we have, um, that we have complete coverage for, for by, from all our officers, or through, by our officers. And that's something we should, uh, consider doing, especially under the circumstances that the, building out the system should be done completely at this point. As far as going for a budget, um, this is something, it, it isn't necessary that we implement this today or tomorrow. Um, it can be done, um, in, through the whole budget process, unfortunately. Um, what's happening now is... What's happening now is we're starting to see more and more litigation. We're starting to see the, like I said before, YouTube, people are utilizing their cellphones more, people have their own dash cams. And I'm just trying to protect our officers, I'm trying to protect our town, and I don't think we can wait another six or eight months because what's going to happen is if we do get into, if there is some sort of allegation against our, how our officers conducted our business, then I think it's going to be more costly in the long run. So the sooner the better, certainly we can wait, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's a better for the town or the district.
Just a comment that, the article proposes to raise and appropriate, so that's a, if you will, supplemental taxation of residents to pay for this. So it's beyond the budget that was approved in, in, at our May town meeting. It doesn't ask, and maybe this is a question better for the town manager, Mr. Sturzick, it doesn't say use free cash or use available money because this is a one-time purchase. And I guess my question would be, why are we doing this through, if it's deemed to be essential, why are we doing this through raise and appropriate instead of through available free cash?
I'm putting it through raise and appropriate as a recommendation because it would leave you the $93,000 target of excess levy capacity that you guys had targeted when you, when we started the FY19 budget. We could certainly change it to transfer from available funds, it's not, you know.
And if we did that, Paul, just, that would take the $93,000 up to $130,000.
That is correct.
Which in essence lowers the potential tax rate, another fraction of whatever it is in the fall, right?
And it lowers your reserves that Moody's has been bugging us about.
Right, but this is, but this is, and this is my opinion here, this is a one-time expenditure, I assume. It's not recurring cost to operate the department, you know, so it seemed to me it makes sense to use one-time available money as opposed to saying, we're going to increase our taxes because now, next year, we've got that 37, you know, where does that taxes go? Is it going, it's not capital, so it's not going into the capital stabilization fund. Does it go to the police department operating budget line item that says purchase cameras?
It would not go into their operating budget, it would go into a special article, just as we do the, the capital projects in May. Those are all set up separately, so it would go into a special article that could only be used for the purchase of video cams.
I guess I'm trying, I'm just trying to decide whether we're better off with raise and appropriate or.
It's really a question of, do you want to leave $130,000 in excess appropriation or do you want to leave $93,000 in excess appropriation? That's really, the amount's doing, conversely, it's having that money go into our fund balance, you know, our reserves or have the money not go into the reserves.
So in other words, it's the principle of the thing. 35 grand doesn't make really a lot of difference in the grand scheme of things in either way. It's the principle of the thing, Mark, that's how I would look at it.
And we also raise and appropriate, all the capital that we raised and appropriated in May are from taxation also.
Absolutely, but default special town meeting is based on a, is in theory based on a supplemental to a budget that was approved in May and rather than modify the budget, this is simply to do some cleanup and either it's with available money or free cash or other things. I mean, I'm, and you'll hear in the next.
Sorry, Mark, but if the budget plays out the way we hope it will, this is free cash next year because we are, because state aid, right, came in and the budget, the level of increase we promised the taxpayers, even if we raise appropriate this 35,000, is still the level that we will tax them. So this does not cut into the target we had.
I'll go back to what you said to begin with, it's the principle of the thing, but there's still a $35,000, had this opportunity, had this request not come through, you know, that $35,000 would not have been raised and appropriated.
Right. I think it's a matter of preference of what the board is, as long as you know the ramifications.
I understand what it is for me, I just want to kind of describe it for everybody else on the board. So any other comments?
I think we've, we've long since looked to the division chiefs to present to us things that they really needed for their departments that were possibly even out of the ordinary like for the capital, not for the capital, community preservation, it's meant to, in this item, I think every taxpayer would clearly understand our decision to move forward with this type of safety. This is not frivolous spending, it's not a silly want, it's an actual need in this day of litigation that we've got going. All you have to do is turn on your TV and you see what's happening on these dash cams. It's some serious stuff. Fortunately, we're very blessed in this town not to have these problems, but any day it can happen. So I think, I think, I have a different level of understanding on this one, Mark. I don't, I understand what you're saying and I totally agree with it in concept, but I feel a little bit differently on this one, that I don't think that we would alienate our taxpayers or that they would be accusing us of frivolous spending for this particular obligation.
And it wasn't the spending I was questioning, it was the source of the revenue, the source of the money.
Right.
And you're saying, taking it from tax, taxing people to do this is, is, you know, you're supporting it the way it's.
It's not a special tax, so we're not putting a special tax, we're just using, we're still under levy limit, so we've just decided to use $37,000 more. And I, I would understand as a citizen, I think most citizens would agree with this. Personally, that's my feeling.
Okay.
Marie?
So when we talk about the tax ceiling, it gets us a little bit closer, right?
Again, we have.
In other words, by doing it, by raising appropriate rather than pulling from, instead of just taking it from the free cash.
By raising it appropriate, you will hit your target of $93,000. To take it out of free cash, you would have gone beyond your target and you would leave $130,000 that you, $130,000 you did not tax the taxpayer instead of the 93. So you would give the taxpayer an additional $30,000, $37,000 break by changing the source.
But you're saying this was our original target?
$93,000 was the original target, the 2.25% was about $93,000.
So we're not changing our target?
You're not changing the target.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments? I mean, my personal opinion is I'd much rather see it, it's a one-time expenditure, see it come out of last year's free cash instead of, as Stephen expressed, next year's free cash because we know we have it now. That's, that's my, my desire to see it come out of last year's free cash, which is really a transfer from available funds rather than raise and appropriate. I don't, I support the expenditure.
Yeah, you want to.
I just want to.
Was there any opposition to doing it that way? I'm not opposed to taking it out of free cash.
It's Moody's rating, right? Not rating.
The $37,000 would enhance slightly the, our reserves.
On the other hand, $35,000 buys us 15 minutes more before we hit the tax cap.
It's flip a coin.
Right. It's a, it's the principle, you're right, Stephen, that's what it is.
I think it's worth it for us to sit down at some point in time and put together a policy on when we're going to look to, but not, I'm not sure if we'd be willing to do that tonight.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that tonight. I think, you know, it's just an issue of, for me, it's an issue of, you know, whether or not we want to, if there's money available, why we're going to tax people. Who comes first, Moody's or our town citizens? And for me, it's the citizens of the town come first and Moody's can take a $35,000 or $37,000 backseat.
Mike, are you going to present a motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve Article 8 by, but instead of, and say, to see if the town will, will transfer from available funds to some of $37,000 and the motion will say, or the article say, or greater or lesser sum for the purchase of six ink card video systems.
Second.
Any other comments or questions?
It really boils down to just where the money's coming from, the pot. And the fact is that the board stands that we did not authorize the additional taxation, but we kind of took it out of the Moody's. And there's, excuse me, can I speak?
Sure, go ahead.
And Paul, your final, does it really matter?
Does it really matter? I would prefer as written, only because it's just going to enhance our reserves that we get nailed on in every comment that we get from Moody's. We'll be out borrowing 14 million in another year, can't hurt.
But it is 37,000.
It is 37, yes it is.
Okay.
Okay, there was a, there was a motion made and seconded and unless there's any other discussion.
Can I have one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
Town manager? What's your feelings? You said principle before, do you really mean that?
I do, it makes, I don't think it makes it any difference on the reserves because my takeaway from those calls is we really can't get our reserves to a level that was ever going to make any difference in their mind. Because they want to see, they want to see that levels of reserve, I think our tax limits, situations will not allow us to get to unless we have a really overwhelmingly favorable increase in property values in a very short period of time. Nor do I think anyone will ever even notice whether we tax them for it. So it's just, you know, it makes no difference to me. I think I earlier expressed the preference for free cash, but it makes no difference.
It might be about two cents on the tax levy.
Any other comments? I'm going to call for a vote, then all those in favor of the motion to accept Article 8 as amended. Any opposed? Motion passes by zero, Marie.
The correction has to be made, it's supposed to be five, correct?
That's supposed to be five, correct. It's five, five ink card videos and the six will be through Maya if they approve it.
Do we reduce the amount too, John, from 37 to 27? Since it's coming out?
No. The more expensive one we go by.
If you're going to reduce the amount, that changes the whole deal.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
Article seven, article, excuse me, article, what's the next one?
Nine.
Article nine requests the town transfer from sewer retained earnings funds, $40,000 for replacing two channel grinders at the Emerson Road pump station. I don't know if the folks from the DPW want to come up here. I will say that this is a capital item and I had had some communications with our capital planning committee who have not yet discussed this, but planned on doing so shortly.
When, I think?
Correct.
Next meeting. So, but go ahead if you want to, just kind of, you can describe what it is, you can anticipate maybe some questions.
Sure, I'm going to turn it over to Pete and let him.
So basically the, the channel grinders, they are comminuted channel grinders, they take in all the effluent or all the wastewater coming into our Emerson Road pump station. They're a set of, and they, basically what they'll do is kind of what they say they're channel grinders, they'll grind up anything, any solids that come through the pump station as small as possible before they get into our wet well. And of course, when it gets into our wet well, then we have our larger pumps that we send off into Springfield. So they, typically their life expectancy, they're a wearable item, about five years. We've had some in the past that have only lasted about two years. They have redesigned them, the company that makes them, it's a sole source. We had one installed in 2000 and the second one was installed in 2007 from the old comminuters that we used to have. So during that time, there was a framework that had to be customized to make these fit in. And the reason, like I said, if we were to another company, which about five years ago I did look into another company to try to get different ones, but that would just mean more money because of the modification to put any other one inside those channels. There would be some downtime and some modifications. So this way, when we do order them and we have ordered them in the past, it usually takes about four or six weeks for delivery, we can install them ourselves. There isn't an issue with that. So we had looked at them earlier, we were down, we were down a personnel this year, so we've been without somebody for about seven months. So our typical maintenance and things on them, they did fall behind a little bit, but we did look at a couple of them when we had some time and they are, they are worn, so we had put in for replacement.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question and it may just be a silly question, but we spent, as you and I'll Pete, but well in excess of 500,000 down there in the last two or four years on the station. And I wonder, what bothers me is that we're dealing with a project or with a, with a pump that's sole source. And is that the direction that you feel is the wisest direction for us going forward that we are forced into a sole source procurement instead of getting something that's more universal?
There really isn't any universal models out there. If you purchase another one from another company, you're going to have their frame and the way it's set up and you're not going to be able to slide anybody else's in there. So anything we get is sole source.
So everything on this line is sole source on these grinders?
There is no such thing as a universal replacement because they all have custom brackets that they slide into. Everybody's unit is different.
Pete, when we bought this, did we buy spare set of grinders?
No. No, because you cannot buy a set of grinders, it's a solid unit and as far as, I even asked that to even taking our old ones because there is a possibility of, you know, trying to get them rebuilt, but that cost is also high. So when I looked into them and I said, well, if we did have an extra one, like if we took out one of our old ones that was, out of the two that were in better shape, it's not like because everything has to be greased, they don't have like a shelf life where you could take them and use, keep them to the side for a year or two. Everything would just dry up. They say it's impossible to keep these off to the side and try to save them or put one on the shelf per se.
So, you know, I just go back to my capital days when I was, used to be an engineer and, you know, we'd look at the project life of something when we spent, before we specified it, it wasn't necessarily whoever sold it, you know, it's the Gillette razor process, you know, yeah, the grinder was cheap, but boy, when you got to buy replacements, you pay through the nose for it. You know, did we do a life cycle analysis of this when we chose this, this option? I mean, $40,000, you know, when we're coming up with this amount of money every couple of years, it seems to me it's pretty extensive and, and, you know, did we look at a, if you will, a 20-year life cycle of this, of this system and ought we not look at a 20-year life cycle, which is, you know, replace it, but it may cost us a little bit upfront, but over the next 20 years, we're going to save a lot of money over replacing grinders every, whatever it is, two to five years.
Well, I just, your question, I'm just trying to understand like how saving a lot of money.
Well, and I'll use the example of a Gillette razor, okay? You know, if somebody says, well, you can get a Gillette razor and the razor costs you five bucks and it comes with a blade, but oh, by the way, the blades cost you $30 apiece. And somebody else says, well, you can go online and get the shave club and the razor costs you $30, but the blades are 10 cents apiece. Okay, over the next 20 years, I'm going to use so much money, here's how much it's going to cost me. You know, we ought to be doing that when we look at a project like this where it's replaceable parts. So we say, yeah, we're spending 20 bucks for the razor, but over the life of this thing, we're only going to pay $35 instead of paying $5,000 for a razor and blades every couple of years. Or in this case, it's the grinder every couple of years. And to me, that's a way to look at something that's a consumable, it's not a disposable, but it's a consumable. I understand what it's doing, it's, people should think of it as a disposal, it's grinding things, it's grinding up our waste before it's shipping it off to Bondi's Island and this stuff wears out. You know, we're not going to stop the wear unless we tell people, don't throw things down the sewers, you know, but, but we ought to be looking at it as an overall, if you will, 20-year cost of, of this project because if we save $5,000 first time around and then two years later, we're spending $5,000 more on the replacement blades, it disappeared after three years and three years after that, we're paying more. And I'm not saying you didn't do it, the question was, did we do that? How do we do that? And even more so, is now a good time to do that analysis before we go out and spend another $40,000 on another unit? Because it may be that the $60,000 unit is really a better buy over the next 15 years, even though we're spending $60,000 now.
The other manufacturers that I looked at, they're pretty much life cycled, they're all the same. There isn't a huge savings and overall, when you're talking about from one unit to the other, like a manufacturer, you're maybe talking maybe, maybe $5,000 to $3,000. It wasn't much, you know, wasn't that great amount less as far as going with another manufacturer. The amount would come in the fabrication, putting in these new brackets in the downtime of the comminuters.
Okay, obviously, I get it. I just, I'm, I guess this is a part of a bigger concern I have, which is that we're asking for these funds outside of our capital planning cycle because I would have expected the capital planning committee, and I still think they ought to be asking these kinds of questions, had this come up at that cycle and, you know, I mean, we don't want to be caught without being able to handle our sewage, but we're, you know, we're doing this out of cycle at a point where I think there's a lot of questions again. And we have to trust you folks who are the professionals on this thing, but to say, please come. on this thing. But to say, please come forward with not the cost of this replacement unit and compare it to others, but give me a twenty-year life cycle at today's cost of each unit and all the replacements we need, and see which works best. And again, I, I just can't see doing this at this time because forty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And I think not only that might be too much, but it might be too little. And that's my biggest concern.
Okay, so question? I guess, because I don't sure if I caught this, it's a sole source provider of this equipment. And I assume, and I think what you said was the analysis, that analysis, maybe not full life cycle, but the analysis of where the costs of replacement were done at the time the design decision was made to use this specific grinder, if I heard you right.
Well, it was just my looking into other manufacturers, other possible ways.
But you did do, and you did do research on what are our other options. But if I understand you correctly, once we've chosen this option, we're kind of married to them.
Correct.
And I think, Mark, I guess what I'd say, I mean, I think the better analogy is Ford Explorer interceptors. For reasons related secondarily to price, the police department has chosen to go with Ford Explorer interceptors because they work for the department the best. We could do a cost analysis of a Ford Explorer versus the Chevy or the Chrysler, but that's the end of the list. There's not fifty different types of police interceptors. Like I'm sure there's not fifty different types of grinder, of grinders. And so I think, to your, I hear what you're saying, and I think that the capital planning committee does ask those questions. But to some extent, I'm sure if it was asked at that time, the answer was given, well, this, there really isn't much of a difference on cost, and this system works the best for us. So I guess it's, it's kind of the horse is already out, the genie's out of the bottle on, on the replacement.
So I'd like to just clarify, because I don't think I heard what you thought you heard. So when we went to put this in, I assume there was a cost analysis done on this equipment versus somebody else's equipment, and this was determined to be the best, or the least, the most cost effective. Based on that, we built a structure, a system that this fit into. Once we've done that, this is the only one that fits into that system. That's what I heard, okay? And to this point, replace it, you'd have to redo the whole system to get this to fit in.
Controls, motors, everything.
Right. But the question that I asked, that I didn't get an answer to, was when we did that, did we do it based on the cost of that one piece of equipment in the system that went with it, or that one piece of equipment with the next twenty years' worth of replacements for it? Because it might have been better to pay more for equipment, design, different equipment, design a whole system around something different, even though it cost a few bucks more initially, because the replacement units would be less expensive.
I can't answer that. That was, they were put in in two thousand.
And I understand that. And I'm not asking you to answer that. What I'm saying is, but now, might it not be cheaper? And we don't, I don't know the answer to this, is to look at, let's just say we're starting over. It's eighteen years after we put this in, and we say, you know, if all bets were off, and we were looking over the next twenty years with replacing multiple parts, aren't we, might we not be better off designing the entire system to fit a different piece of equipment, because we know that equipment's only going to last the same two to five years that this one is? And then as we put in each piece of equipment, we're better off doing that. That was my point, Stephen. So it's not, it's not a question of, you know, yeah, once we designed it clearly, you know, spot for spot, we're not going to put something else, somebody else's grinder into the assistant, system.
So Mr. Mark, just to get back to the research I did, it's because there was no backup information that I had why they put these in originally. Just manufacturers came over and said, okay, we need new channel grinders. We need to get the old ones out. This was a product. This is what they chose. So looking at the other manufacturers that I looked at, to put in a whole brand-new system as far as the refabrication, just for one unit, putting in the motors and all the controls and switching everything out, you're probably looking at a hundred and a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. If every five to six years, you can change out the core that we have now, each one roughly under twenty thousand dollars, and you're looking at your twenty-year program, well, you can, you can decide for yourself on what we'd want to do at that time, because you're still going to get this new piece of equipment at a much higher price initially, but they're still going to wear out in the same amount of time.
Weren't any cheaper, I thought I heard you say.
No, they weren't that much cheaper.
So I don't know really what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
I hear you.
And the other thing is, how many times have these particular pieces of equipment replaced?
Well, since I've been here, I think we've replaced them in eleven years, maybe three times.
So the town's already...
One, there was just one when, just kind of prematurely, it was one that we had to change out. It was a core exchange. At that time, I think it was around eighteen thousand dollars for one that we replaced. And that only lasted, it didn't even last two years.
I mean, I think my point, and I'm not trying to say I don't agree with your, the principle of your argument. I'm just going to say, town's already said, we know we have to replace these, and it's, it's already kind of settled now that this is the equipment we use, and we have to replace them. I think if we were going to renovate the, do a larger project, I agree with you. And honestly, it may be something worth doing, but we still have to replace these now. We won't be able to get that done before we need to replace this piece of equipment.
Marie?
I missed the last part of the other meeting. Did, was this on the capital plan before, and we just couldn't cover it? Or it's because you were short of man, and you didn't realize the problems we had?
I'll take that one. My error, I thought capital planning was twenty-five thousand and ten-year use of life. And because these were less than that, it never occurred to me to bring it to capital. So...
Okay. But you, you found out about this, that you needed these when?
When you brought it to me over the summer, right?
It was over the summer.
I mean, it's five years. And so I think you can even make the case that it still wouldn't fit as a capital item, because they have a, it's a, one individual unit may last five years, but others may quit after three. Just like, just like the police car example I used, they are not capital items, even though they are over the financial threshold, they are under the life cycle threshold. Because it's not, it's not or, it's and.
So one could argue that, like police cars, this ought to be budgeted maintenance items, and not being spent, used capital for it.
One can make that argument.
Kind of tough, because with police cars, we're turning over three every year. This is coming up once every three or four years.
You don't have to do one-third.
Basically, yeah.
And we could run into an option where you're going to replace one in two years, not five years. Or we could replace one in seven years.
But you need two now. Yeah. I, I move to approve Article Nine.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other comments? My only comment is, I sure wish the capital planning committee would review this, and I'd still ask them to review it before we approve it. And they're going to have something to say about it, certainly before it gets to the town, town meeting floor.
They'll, they'll tell town meeting how they feel about it at town meeting.
Yeah, I assume they will. Okay, the motion's been made by Miss Angeles and seconded by Mr. Foster. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion passes four to one. Mr. Gold voted against it. Okay, next one is, don't go too far.
This, the next one's not for Pete.
But you, you opposed only based that the capital hadn't seen it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, I'll say this before I say it again, you know, we can't afford to have our sewer systems backed up, you know, we know that. Article Ten is the last article on the warrant, is to transfer funds for the purchase of a, of a skid steer. Skid?
That's right.
Skid steer. And so...
I'm going to introduce Deputy Director Jeff McAlmond, if you guys remember him.
Yeah.
He is our expert in this area. And so I'm going to turn it over to him and let him describe to you what, what we're buying.
Commonly referred to as a Bobcat, a skid steer loader typically operates by locking up the brakes on one side and skid steering it to the opposite direction. They either come in wheel, wheel models or track models. Our Bobcat that we had, fifteen-plus years old, last, last year we went to the capital committee. We came here, went to the town, we got approval for an attachment, for a paver attachment for it. In the meantime, our, our trusty Bobcat gave up the ghost. And it's, it's, they, it let go, and it's not really, it's not worth fixing. We, I asked to put this item on the, on the town meeting for the fall, and so we could be ready come spring to do our spring road repairs. We can, we'll move forward with the purchase of the pavement attachment. And with this unit, we'll be able to expedite our pavement repairs in the spring, and I, and it starts to fill out. We actually had scheduled the skid steer loader replacement on next year's capital in the five-year plan. And so we're, we're really about where we thought we were. Unfortunately, just didn't get that last year out of it. But we're, we're at this point, we've got all the, we've got a new, we've, you know, to get a new roller, we got an asphalt reclaimer. And this is a key element to move us forward, to expedite those spring pavement repairs. And I think the community will see some benefit of it.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions, Marie?
Can we lease this?
You probably could, but a, be a lease purchase, or you're thinking annual lease?
Well, I know we're just starting to, we have a program where we're looking to lease vehicles rather than purchase them.
We use this equipment outside of asphalt repairs in the spring. There's other applications for it.
It's, it's a, excuse me, it's a twelve-month, it's a twelve-month, and I should have explained that. It's a twelve-month unit. We'll, we'll be clearing snow with it in the winter, backfilling trenches when we're doing repairs. And I hope to be able to utilize it as well when we do our catch basin repairs. So it is a twelve-month a year piece of equipment.
I have a second question, Mark. And how are we justifying water sewer funds?
We do, it'll be involved with the repairs to the water and sewer lines, as well as the pavement repairs that are associated. Where we are right now, the water and sewer trenches, when they get to a certain point, they're bigger than we can handle manually. Unfortunately, they've had to contract them out with the, with this piece of equipment and the attachment that was already appropriated. We'd be able to avoid having to contract that out. And I believe last year Pete left, I think he contracted out like thirty thousand dollars worth of pavement repairs that we'd be able to do in-house with the unit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I asked for, I asked for a cost estimate on the repairs last meeting. I never received any, anything. So I'm, I'm a little disturbed on this whole issue because it's twenty years old. It's time for to give up the ghost. I just wanted to know how much the repairs were. You say it's beyond, so you have to have had some type of cost estimate, I would assume, for the repairs.
Actually, we, we looked at it in-house. The main pump is gone, and basically, it'd have to be completely repaired to get at it. We have to strip the unit down completely to get it, and it's, it's really rusted. It was originally stored in a salt shed. And we just felt that it really wasn't worth that kind of repair. And we didn't, we didn't price it out to do that, but we really made a conscious decision that it, it just wasn't justified to do that.
Okay.
Paul, can I ask you what the, what the expense from water and sewer retained earnings of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars would mean to those funds? Assuming that we just took forty thousand dollars out of those?
For the year in close, they're both seven hundred thousand dollars plus. So they would still remain well above our target bounds of five hundred thousand.
Okay. And my, my recollection is, in the past, when we bought stuff, it's generally been fifty percent capital stabilization, twenty-five percent each of water and sewer stabilization funds. And yet this is a third, a third, and a third. Is there a...
That might have been my math error. I, I, when I did it, I presented it to Paul with these numbers. I, I forgot half, twenty-five, twenty-five. I did a third, a third, a third. So that I, certainly, we could change that. There's no logic to it, other than I thought I was duplicating what was done in the past.
And if I may, in actuality, I think we'll be using it more than twenty-five percent for both water and sewer, because a lot of the work we're going to be doing is asphalt repairs to the sewer, sewer and water ditches.
That's fine. I'm just looking for justification of taking it out of different, different funds. And this was, is different from what, what we've done in the past. Again, I, you know, I'd much rather see the, see the capital, capital planning commission, committee view of these in a little bit more depth. And I understand, Stephen, their advisory, the select board, but they often have the chance to look at this a little bit more than, than we do in terms of pricing, options, a few other things that, you know, we're talking about an eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollar piece of equipment, which is a pretty, pretty significant piece of equipment, that, you know, I would hope to have a, you know, some kind of defined, defined shelf life. Mr. Foster?
Yeah, I have to express some grief that I have. I've always had grief with this twenty-five, 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 or thirty, 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 because, you know, we have a fantastic maintenance management system. By this time, we should be have some detailed information on how much equipment's being used and all of these things to justify these expenditures. Because I personally, this thirty, thirty, thirty is just, just guessing. It's absolute guessing. And I really don't think you're using it in water and sewage sixty-six percent of the time. I think it's more on your, your roads, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But that's just my feelings on what I see happening in town. But we certainly have the maintenance management system. By this time, we had personnel changing. We could be tracking this stuff a little bit better and being able to report more statistical information instead of guesstimation type. I don't mean that negatively. But in this day and age, we have the means to, to be factual, and we're still not being factual. Doesn't change the cost of the equipment, just changes the allocations. I have a problem with the allocations only, not the cost of the equipment.
Could I just precise? You said the word factual. I mean, I don't want to make it seem we're not misleading anybody. We're just not as precise with the cost allocation.
I just said that. I said, I don't have a problem with the equipment. It's just the percentages that we're going. Because it's just, I'm just a firm believer that that can't be accurate. I mean, I just, it's, it's a guesstimation.
Can't be precise.
It's, it's just, it's convenient. We've used it as a convenience. I've argued about it for seven, eight years.
It's how, it's every municipality does it that way. I mean, it is a, and when we did, when we did the allocation on the hour some years ago, it was close enough to the standard practice that we didn't completely abandon.
Now, I can stand you to correct it on that, because we made major modifications to labor. And you know that. Since you've been here, we have, because we found out that in fact, it was wrong on how we were splitting it. But let's let it go. There's no, it's not the time or place.
Just a question, Jeff. How is eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars derived as the cost of a replacement?
We got a quotation from Monroe Tractor for a unit that we'd, we'd demoed to make sure it would fit the bill for what we were looking for.
But when we go to buy this, are we going to, we're going to have to bid it?
We could either buy it off the state bid through Monroe Tractor, or we could proceed with the bid process.
Okay, it does exist on the state?
Yes, they are.
State purchase. Okay. Marie, were you going to ask a question?
No.
I just, just one more point about the capital planning committee. I mean, they are going to go. The timing of the meetings was not, it's not Mario's fault. And the other thing is, it's not like an expansion or a new vehicle, it's a new vehicle, but replacing a vehicle that has failed before its scheduled replacement. So it was something that came up outside of the timeline of the capital planning committee's process, which is in the fall, as you recall.
I hear you, Stephen. I'll just say that it took me one email to Dr. Metz, and he said, yeah, I'll call a meeting of the capital planning committee to get this reviewed. And had that call been made, or email been sent a month earlier, we'd have their review right now. So...
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
So I, once I realized that we were going to write these articles, that we were going to have the information we needed to move forward with that, I emailed Dr. Metz also and asked to be on his next agenda. It was already too, too late in August for it to happen. They already had their meeting. So the next available meeting was September, but these were due before then. So the timing didn't work out. Point being is, he knew about it. He didn't have time for the meeting, i.e., the next one wasn't scheduled. I just didn't want it to go on the record that we were trying to circumvent it. That was not the case.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one question. What is delivery time?
Do you have that?
What's it?
Delivery time? How long before we get it?
Probably thirty to sixty days.
Have we ran, how long's the unit been broken?
The unit's been broken probably four to five months.
Have we rented a unit?
We have.
This one, right?
This one is a demo, but we've rented some others.
Okay, so we have a unit that's been filling in since this one went down?
Yes.
Okay. Why, well, I don't want to go there. Motion to approve Article Ten is written.
The motion's been made as their second, made second by Mr. Low. All those, all those in favor? Close. Motion passes four to one. And I, again, voted no, because I thought capital planning could have, should have seen it first. But motion is approved. With that, all ten warrant articles and the motion have been, been approved. And so I don't know that we need a separate motion to, we're going to get the...
Yeah, I don't want to close the warrant.
No, no.
This sort of thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Because it was stored in the salt shed, if we ever get this new DPW vote... Because it was stored in the salt shed, if we ever get this new DPW vote.
Yeah, we won't need to do that anymore. That predates some of us here. I don't know the logic behind that, other than them trying to keep it out of the weather, but the negative effects of the salt, I don't know. Anyway.
Okay, so, so we've gone through one by one of the, of the warrant articles, but there's one article that, item that, that Marie has asked us to look at, and that is a potential discussion about, and going back to an early article, a plastic ban, plastic bag ban warrant article, and I guess, Marie, you've asked a couple of people from your energy committee to join us.
Yes, they've, they've worked on the, the actual plastic, the bylaw. I'm going to, I think I gave the electronic version out to this. The two comments that were made on it was, one, I believe Paul said it should have had, here, you can hand that down, saves me from standing up, was that we should, we would need a revolving fund if we.
Right, if you wanted to direct the fund to be used for other types of recycling, then you'd have to have some type of department to revolve the account.
So that was removed, and there was some, another change that you made, Andrea?
Yes.
This is the Energy and Sustainability, and would you just announce your names?
Waiting for our total appointment, but Andrea Chason, do I need to give an address?
No.
236 Press Re Circle, and I'm on the Energy and Sustainability Committee, which we're hoping is going to get its own little page now on the town website, and.
Lori Robinson, 53 Warren Terrace.
And Rob Katner, 55 Millwood.
And we're all there together. And so in response to the spring meeting where the plastic bag ban was voted into existence by majority rule at the town, we drafted a proposed set of bylaws modeled after many of the bylaws throughout the Commonwealth. I think there are 83 towns already in the Commonwealth that currently have a ban on plastic bags, and we pretty much modeled this after that, knowing that it would have to go before the town council and the attorney general's office, and what we want to do is get this on the October warrant for the town meeting for enactment. So what you have received is our proposal. Certainly, it's capable of being edited by anybody here, and it follows pretty much what is going on throughout the rest of the Commonwealth. I will tell you that majority of the Commonwealth uses the Board of Health and the Director of the Board of Health to implement the, enforce the ban on plastic bags, and comes up with whatever modifications necessary, exemptions and issues, the fines, if there are going to be any fines. What we established here is that it conforms to what the Attorney General's Office has already deemed to be an appropriate measurement, the American Society for Testing and Materials, using their specifications for what is an acceptable, or what are not acceptable, plastic bags, and we've made an exemption for newspaper bags, bags containing the unwrapped food items that you particularly pick up in a grocery store, as well as bags that get placed over articles of clothing from a dry cleaner, for example. Two of the modifications is that we've expanded the term store to mean not just a retail establishment, but any entity, business venture that is selling things. So we were kind of listening to, for example, the farmer's market in Long Meadow is also one of the purveyors that we needed to be aware of, and the purpose of this is really focused on environmental health. Penalties and enforcement would be by the Department of Health and the Director, and would be, that's one of the questions that I have, is the Board of Health needs to take a look at this and make sure that it is acceptable. We are taking out the provision that the department collect, if there are fines to be collected, collects those fines and deposits them into a Green Communities Fund account, knowing that there isn't such an account, although in the future, we're hoping that it can be applied for sustainability projects, but that's down the road. And we've asked that this be adopted by all the stores within Long Meadow within 180 days following the adoption of the bylaw from October, giving sufficient lead time. I'd like to point out, I know that CBS and Big Y are two of the main anchor stores that we have in Long Meadow. They are already conforming to plastic bag reduction programs throughout the Commonwealth, and so they're anticipating this, and I don't think it's a surprise for them to know that this is coming down the pike, and they're doing it comfortably in the other communities throughout the Commonwealth. So I think the other stores that are around are going to be comfortable with this provision as well, but we certainly also want to provide an educational component and let people know that, give them sufficient lead time so that they're aware of what's happening. So I don't know what questions you might have, but.
Let's find out.
Mark had prepared.
I got a bunch, but go ahead.
And the two comments that were made the last time, one was that Recycle should be looking at this, and we do have the liaison. Recycle is the one, Liz Bone, who's on the Energy in Committee, and so she said that's already been reviewed by Recycle in regards to the Board of Health. I had sent it earlier in the summer to Bev, and I said to, send it back to our Beverly, and she said, well, she doesn't think it's really in their purview, but she would send it out individually to all of the members of the board and see if there were any, they had any comments to make, because they weren't planning on meeting until the beginning of October, but I was hoping we could at least have a placeholder and send this to our attorney to review, and then the Board of Health could always make a statement on whether they support the bylaw as written or not, but I don't think that they would be really getting too involved with the writing of the bylaw. That was my understanding.
Okay, Marie, just as a correction or comment on that, so I've communicated with the Chairs of the Board of Health and the Chair of the Recycling Commission, and both have indicated they have not seen it and would like to see it. So although I know Liz Bone is on your committee, the Chair, the Board of, the Recycling Committee as a committee has not reviewed this, and I think it's important that they do review it, and I'll give you a couple of reasons why in a minute. And also, I think since the Board of Health is the enforcement arm of this, I think it's important that the Board of Health indicate their ability to actually, if nothing else, have the resources to do this, and how they plan on doing it. I mean, our Board of Health is literally Beverly or Sean, so it's, it's not like we've got, we've got a lot of people hanging around looking for more work to do with the Board of Health. But, but I have some questions, and I guess my biggest question is, if we're going to ban plastic bags, why aren't we banning plastic bags? When I look around town, the number one cause of plastic bags is the, is the orange newspaper bags. The number two pla, number bags I see hanging around town, or what I'll call, I guess, produce bags, that, that are the not point of purchase, but the, those aren't, those aren't covered by this. And it seems to me that either you ban plastic bags, or you don't ban plastic bags, but to say, well, we're going to ban, ban these, but not those, defeats the purpose of keeping plastic bags out of the, out of our waste streams, which is, is the danger. And I got to tell you, I, we can walk around town right now, and I'll find five or six newspaper bags floating around, around town. So we either ban them all, or we shouldn't ban any of them. And that's, that's kind of my take on this thing, and, and I guess I was disappointed when I read the original draft of this, saying, well, we're not really banning them all, we're just banning the ones we don't like. And that's just not, doesn't seem to me to make a lot of sense, and I'd love to hear your comments about it, sure.
May I respond to that?
Go ahead.
A couple of things, let me just back up for a second and say that there are a number, that most of the towns have used their Board of Health as the enforcement mechanism, but some of them have used a select board, and some of them have used a police department, so I don't know what entity ultimately gets the reason to do that. Secondly, every bylaw that I have looked at in the state, and that included the ones that were sent by Steve Crane to here, looking at all of them, have exemptions, and these are the exemptions. And so my concern is to get past the Attorney General's Office. I'm not disagreeing with you. I would like to ban all plastic, but I don't know that it would get past the Commonwealth's review of that in the municipal law section, and so I think this is a first step, and I don't think that we should shy away from building upon it. Again, everything is a transition, everything needs to move, and what we're starting to do is also educate people that they're not going to be getting the plastic bags that they use at the, at the point of checkout. It'd be wonderful if we had the ability to use non-plastic for everything else. I, I go around my street picking up plastic bags all the time, I'm not disagreeing with you, but if you don't start somewhere, you don't get to where you want to go. And one of the things that I've watched this town do is do its, it's all or nothing, and I would like to say that we need to make sure that we're transitioning in a way that's going to get us to where we want to go. And so let's see how this goes for a couple of years, and put it down and say, all right, now we're ready to move forward because we have substitutes for the other things.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other?
I just, if I could add, I just think of the, you know, the convenience factor, and as much as we'd like to see them all go, we have our habits, and I don't know that the will of the people, when they voted on a plastic bag ban, were considering all the ramifications of going whole hog and banning every kind of bag. I just, I think that would be a giant step forward, and I think, I think baby steps is a better way to go.
I guess the other concern, you know, and Andrea, you mentioned this about, you know, if, if not the Board of Health, maybe somebody else, but the way this bylaw is written, it is the Board of Health, and, and short of their review and approval of it, I, I'm reluctant to say, yeah, we're going to push this onto them. I think they need to, and, and we've given them the opportunity to comment, they will comment on it, and I think we've got a recycling committee, it's demonstrated with everything they've done, that, that they're, you know, willing to take a look at it and comment on it. I, I really would like to see those, or those groups make a, make a comment about this, and what we seem to be is that we're under the gun, under the gun, under the gun, so let's short circuit stuff, because by golly, we've got to get this approved tonight to put this on a warrant, and, and the fact is that, you know, if we do it right, and it takes a little longer, the world doesn't end, and we've done it right, and we've got everybody's buy-in. That's my take on this. Marie?
I think that we will have everyone have looked at it by the time of town meeting, number one. Number two, it has been in their hands for several months. If they had some big concerns about it, they would have come up till now. I've requested this, I've requested this to be on a Board of Health meeting going back to July, and the same thing with this is, this was sent to the select board, and the recycle committee can be making changes and everything. I'm asking for it to be a placeholder, because I think this all will be completed in the next two weeks. Beverly said she could get them maybe by the end of September to have a meeting, but right now, they were heading towards the beginning of October, and I think the reason that you have this written the way it is, is we were trying to mirror not only the most towns' bylaw, but also, we didn't want to have anything too different, so if the state did in a year or so come up with their own bylaw, we're not clashing. And so that's why it might not be exactly how people want it to be written, but I think that it's something that will pass through the Attorney General's Office.
Okay, what do you mean by a placeholder, though?
Well, and I think we've done this a lot. I think the last time we did a bylaw, there was some issues with planning, and planning still needed to have a meeting, so I'm requesting that we put this in here, and if we need to make some amendments on the floor because Recycle wants to change, or Board of Health wants to change, or if Board of Health says we refuse to support the article, then we will, you know, it should be withdrawn on the floor. But if, by saying that this can't be completed in the next two weeks by the, if there's, it's the will of the two committees, it definitely can be completed in the next two weeks, because there's not anything, and if we need to make a few adjustments, like planning's had to do on the board, and we're even talking now about making some motions and changes on the floor, or maybe it'll go through, or maybe it'll have to be withdrawn, but I hate to kill it right now and say, we're going to wait all the way to the spring, because even this says there's six monthly time, so even if it's voted on in October, it's not going to go into effect for another six months.
How about your legal review, though?
Yeah.
It's, it's not, I have a legal review, I don't know if you can get all that. Can all that be taken care of in two weeks?
I, I think so. I thought I had shared it with counsel. Did you send it to him?
I did not, no.
I, I looked to see if I had, to be honest, I thought I had sent it to him, but I couldn't find a record of it, so I, I didn't know if we'd shared it, but it's not, if this is based on the bylaws that have been used regularly, it's not, I don't think it's going to be that, you know, difficult of a review. I think it's more, you know, making sure that, I mean, the Board of Health is going to be, if it's approved by town, I mean, the Board of Health is stuck. They don't have any choice.
That's, that's the problem, they're stuck.
And I think in terms of Marie's kind of placeholder, right, what she, what she means is there's been times in the recent past where a bylaw was pending some review, and at town meeting, a different version of it was handed out to be voted on. It's not a great way to do business, but we have done it.
I, I think that, again, I, I'd rather do it and do it right and do it once than, than put it on there and say, well, we're putting it on there, knowing that it might be changed by Board of Health, Recycling Commission, Town Council, you know, and we're, and we're just kind of putting our, our best, best effort, and this is not to denigrate anybody, because people worked hard and long on, on this, but the people who've written this have done it based on, on what else is out there, as opposed to on town laws. I, I, I get it, I understand the rush to do this, but I just don't think that government should be done quickly rather than thoroughly, and I'm going to vote to do this thoroughly, and I think that's the way to do it. Go ahead.
I don't think Recycle and Board of Health, I don't think there will be changes to this. I think by showing it to them, what we're saying is we're willing to, you know, go through the process and give them right to have input, but I don't think this is going to get ripped apart by those three groups.
Right, but what we're saying to them is, we're giving this to you as a courtesy, but it's already on the warrant, and it's pretty much been approved to go through, as it is. You know, it, it's very different from saying, you know, we've got a draft from the Energy Task Force, you know, and what we want to do is finalize this with our Town Council and our, and the organization that, that really is going to be chartered with enforcing it, which is the Board of Health, and the group that's been working on our recycling and all our other programs, but, you know, we're just, you know, but it's too late, because it's, it's already on the warrant. I mean, I just don't see, you know, we're literally, you know, it's ready, fire, aim in this, instead of ready, aim, fire, in my opinion. And, and, you know, if it's such a good warrant article, and again, it's not that I think plastic bags are the greatest thing in the world, if it's a great warrant article, it'll be, it'll be perfect in six months, or at the spring town meeting. Go ahead, Andrea.
So we voted on this in the spring, and the anticipation was that it would happen, and we've had the summer, and part of the problem, and I'm, is that during the summer, very little happens in this town, and because everybody's on vacation, you can't get things together, but we have 180 days where the, the Board of Health can figure out how to implement this, and they can also, we can add a designate to it. We can add the term, does it, Board of Health, or it's designate, and it can figure out how it wants to do that. I understand that the Board of Health is one person. I totally get that, and it's got a committee, or a group of people who are volunteers. We're all volunteers on this one, but the town expects that we're going to actually get this done and not keep postponing it, and I can just see us going down the path and saying, well, you know what, we've had Thanksgiving and Christmas, and, this is my frustration, and February break, and, you know, we're down to the town again, and we just, we've missed the spring warrant. There's always an obstacle in the way, and I don't think this is a bad draft, and I think it actually will fly more than not fly, and I would like to see it given the chance to live or die with the town, because the town expects it. People have already said, didn't we vote on this already? Why are we doing it again? I run into people who say, I thought we were going to have this done already, and we haven't done it. So there's a lot of, my frustration as a member of the community is that we're sitting here once again, and I can just see us coming down the pike, all good intentions, and not getting it done for the spring one either, and we'll be back to the same argument. for the spring one either. And we'll be back to the same argument. And that's a frustration for all of us. So to some degree, putting a little bit of pressure isn't such a bad idea.
Right. But for you to come here and say, Big Y and CVS are anticipating this, says nothing to me, because I haven't heard from Big Y and CVS. For you to say, the Board of Health is going to be okay with this, means nothing, because when I communicated with the Board of Health, they said, we haven't talked about it, and it's going to potentially put a burden on us. When I hear somebody say, don't worry, the Recycling Commission has approved this, and I asked the Chair of the Recycling Commission, we haven't seen it, and we haven't voted on it, I'm getting two different stories, Andre. And I truly understand and believe your frustration. But I'll tell you, I've been on this board long enough that I understand, there's three, I've said this before, there's three speeds of government: slow, slower, and town government. And that's the way things work, because you got to do it right, and you got to go through the steps. We need to have Town Council review this, and to say, let's put it on the warrant, and after it's on the warrant, then we'll have Town Council review it. That's not the way things should be done in town government. We should be having Town Council review it before it comes to the, before it gets on the warrant. We should be having everybody, you know, you have all your i's dotted, all your t's crossed, and we stand up before town meeting, we say, we all endorse this because it's the right thing to do, as opposed to potentially having somebody stand up and say, well, we looked at it, and we want to change these words, and we want to change those words, and we don't think of this. And now, all of a sudden, it looks, it looks like, do we really know what we're doing here? And that's my biggest concern. It's not the theory of, do we, the banning of plastic bags is inevitable in this town, in this community, and probably nationally. It's inevitable. Like I said, my first frustration is, you know, it doesn't address the global issue of plastic bags in the waste streams, because we're only banning certain ones of them. Accepting your comment, well, it's a first start, we'll see what we can do, that's fine. But it's not, you know, it's not a reason to say, so let's go out and do this, because if we delay this four or five months, my, by gosh, we're going to have all these extra plastic bags in the recycling stream. We already have them there because we're not banning them all. So my sense would be to wait and do it right. But again, I'm one vote out of five, so we're going to see what happens. And Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I would, I think the town has already spoken on this. I think that, you know, I've talked to people. They've said clearly, you know, Big Y and CVS, they're used to it, and they're immersed in different towns, and they're not going to blink at all, you know. And we're spending a lot of time on this, and we should just pass it. Plus, the state may pass their own bill, be, time before, between now and the end of the year, for all we know. The only thing about this that kind of puts me off is that it doesn't start until, it says it will take effect six months after the passage of this. And, you know, you look at all the bags that we're going to have for Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Years, and think, why don't we just make it within 10 days? You know, why don't we just make it? One, it's approved, it's approved. You know, we approved it last year. I mean, why do we have to keep pushing it down the road? I mean, I don't see why. The stores are not going to be making complaints. I don't, I think we're the only ones that have the majority of complaints.
We're just trying to make it palatable to everyone. I mean, we'd be fine with that, too, as long as, I mean.
Yeah.
Hey, Mark.
Yeah.
Can I just offer, I mean, Andre, I hear your frustration on this. But I mean, what frustrates me, as the person responsible for delivering the local government services, is when people don't focus on how their local government works until they want a particular thing or they're mad about a particular thing. And then they don't focus at all on how the process actually works. And I know you're not in that category, because I know you follow town affairs very closely. But the people you're hearing from, I thought we already did this, obviously don't know the difference between a citizen's petition written specifically as a non-binding resolution and a citizen's petition written as a bylaw. The former was what we got. The latter is what is needed to promulgate this bylaw, and you guys know that. That's why we're here. So I think, from my perspective, it's really immaterial to me whether it ends up on this warrant or the next warrant. Where I do agree with Mark is that the 180-day timeline for implementation doesn't mitigate the possibility that changes may be required of this. And then you're still going back at the annual town meeting and reopening the bylaw and making those changes. And then it's another six months before it can go into effect, because you had to change the thing. I don't think there's going to be a great difference between what we have in front of us and what we end up going with. But I don't know, because I think, as I sent the board the email that I got from, quite fortuitously, from someone who actually works with mostly retailers, and said, most of them are cut out of this cloth. And I didn't go back, to be honest, and double-check this one over those. But I'm assuming we're going to end up with something close to that. But I think from my perspective, the, and the other thing is, the petitioner dropped it off, Debbie remembers this, we, she dropped it off, and then like the next day was like, I'm going to withdraw. And then the day before town meeting decided that, or two days before town meeting, decided it was full speed ahead. So we couldn't even advise her on how to maybe offer an amendment on the floor of town meeting to do this right, because she had told us for two months that it wasn't going to happen. And so I feel like, yes, it's frustrating that we feel like we're behind it. But had we, had it been planned out a little better at the front, and maybe we could have avoided this kind of, you know, cramming before the deadline thing. And so I, like I said, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. It's the Select Board's decision what goes on the warrant. But the frustration about how we got here is a shared, that's a two-way street. And I just want to make that clear.
Marie?
The, I knew it was going to be tough to jump through each of the hoops that needed to get this on the fall town meeting. But it's not been a lack of trying. I have sent this, I sent this out to everybody in July. Then I resent it in August. This went to the Board of Health. I contacted the Board of Health numerous times in August. They had this in their hands. They didn't seem to be that upset about it. Then I said, I really need an answer for the fall town meeting. Still no answer. Then I said, Beth, I need to, from the last meeting, when you said, no, no, we need to hear their response. Well, they're not going to meet till the end of September, beginning of October. They're not riled about this, okay? I think that the Board of Health can meet on this. The Recycle Committee, that's just a courtesy, if you ask me. The Recycle Committee knows that this has been, we've been working on this for a long time. We'll be glad to send this to them. And I understood that it had already been given to them. We'll be glad to send it to them. And asking the attorney to review the thing, this is not unusual. Planning often throws something at them a month before. We have just almost a month for them to review it and decide if there's anything really seriously wrong. And then it'll have to go to the Attorney General's office. It can go through the two necessary hoops, which is the attorney and the Board of Health, in sufficient time, if the Board of Health decides to meet. It doesn't seem like they're that interested in meeting and making a decision on this. So I think postponing it another six months, because the Board of Health is not interested in meeting on this, and because we haven't handed this to our attorney, where the attorney could probably review this within a week and get that back to us, I, if there was a real thing that we had to study and decide, I would say, yeah, let's wait another six months. But we have 10 articles on town meeting. It's not as if the town's not expecting this. I think they'll probably be surprised if plastic bag bylaw's not on there. We agree, the process was flawed in the beginning. We knew that. But we've been trying to pick it up and getting the ball done and over the finish line. And I think it's almost at the finish line. This has been in the hands of the Select Board for several weeks. No one's been calling and saying, oh, this is horrible, this needs to be changed, that needs to be changed. Because I think it's pretty much a cut and paste from all the other towns. So I would like to see it put on the fall town meeting. And if it fails, it will be, it will be, they can say, Marie's the one who blew it and pushed it through, and we're going to have to redo it. But I think it's worth a try.
So is that a motion?
Oh, I guess it could.
I could just add one other comment, if I may. I mean, as written, it is kind of boilerplate of what other towns are doing. If it's the will of the Select Board to go ahead and ban a lot more, then I think you do need to take your time with it. But that's your decision as to whether or not you want to go to the newspaper bags and everything else. This is a more conservative first step, but.
Richard?
What have the other towns done? Have they banned newspaper bags?
No, for the most part, at this moment, in this state, they have not.
Do you know why?
Other states.
Do you know why?
No, I don't know why. They may not be a good alternative to get them delivered to individuals without getting them soaked. So that may be part of it. Part of it is resistance, part of it is lack of, I don't know what other states are doing about this. But in this state, so far, these are the exemptions. And why the dry cleaner, and why the plastic bag for picking up your produce, those are the three exemptions that seem to be fairly standard.
Yeah, well, I'm like you. I didn't know why we don't, if we're going to ban them, ban them all.
I think there's probably, I'm sure there's probably a health, like a food safety regulation that governs the produce bags, the produce.
You can get waxed, though.
Well, we used to put them in paper bags when I was young.
Yeah, yeah, the wax, the wax paper. The only other concern I had, Stephen, is if Marie is accurate, and I don't mean that if, Marie has stated that this was sent out many months ago to public help and that kind of stuff. Do you know anything on why they haven't met and issued a report on this or bought? I mean, they're going to be the enforcement agency, right?
They have. I'll be honest, I don't, if that was received by the Board of Health over the summer, I'm not aware of it. I think we saw this draft. I didn't see the, I didn't see the draft till, I think, late August. But if it went out, I don't know. I think they have concerns. They, it's just another area of responsibility, another headache for them. They're volunteers as well. I mean, Beverly is not a volunteer, but the Board of Health that's going to be in charge of promulgating this is volunteers. Again, I think that it is a boilerplate thing. It is a somewhat fait accompli that's going to happen. From a process standpoint, I see Mark's point entirely. It just, it feels rushed. But what's the net effect of rushing, you know?
Do you feel that the public health and the law, or not law enforcement, the legal team have got enough time to review this prior to the meeting?
Yeah, I think so. I think, well, not the Board, I mean, the Board of Health is just, they're not, if I know the Board of Health at all, they're not going to say, town meeting, don't approve this, we don't want it. They're going to say, if this is what you want to do, we'll, we'll deal with it once it's approved. They generally don't comment on warrant articles, other than, I think, occasionally the fluoride thing. But I think, I don't think Town Council have an issue reviewing this, especially when I give him the information that I shared with the board. But I do like the idea of a motion, where if it doesn't work out, we get to blame Marie for everything. I think that needs to be included in the wording of the motion.
Say just one of a long line of things we've been running.
Marie, based on the discussions we've been having tonight, I'd really like to see us take Section 4, Item A, and modify it to say, the Director of the Long Meadow Department of Health or other administrator as assigned by the town manager shall have the authority to enforce this law. I think we've got to give that flexibility for the...
Okay, to the town manager.
It's, well, to whoever it is. I mean, it says the...
What is the exact wording, Steve?
The Director of the Long Meadow Department of Health or other administrator as assigned by the town manager.
Okay.
Shall have.
Actually, well, then it should say, then you should say, the town manager shall appoint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, here we go. So now we're, you know, I mean...
It goes the way you had it.
No, no. All I'm saying is, and your comments of...
It says Board of Health everywhere.
Nobody's commented on it, is because, very frankly, I don't think anybody's taken the time to read this line by line, other than your committee.
Yes, that's I'm sure.
I mean, the Board of Health hasn't taken the, other than...
I read it line by line.
I said, other than her committee. I said, I don't think the Board of Health's read it line by line. I truly believe that the Recycling Committee hasn't read it line by line, and I haven't read it line by line.
I actually would say, it would be good to include that, not because I don't think Beverly or our Board of Health Director will be enforcing it. It's, if we do do this regional health district, and we end up contracting out some with another community for enforcement or code inspection, it gives us the authority to do that. That's another reason why I would want some discretion in that. We have talked to the police about making it a criminal.
Well, I just had one question, one comment. Under penalties and enforcement, you have Part D, Number 4, the store shall have 15 days after the date that a notice of violations is issued to pay the penalty. What happens if they don't pay in 15 days?
Doesn't the chief go after them?
No, it's not criminal.
Out there with a warrant, but...
No, no.
This isn't a criminal.
That's a very good question.
I mean, the reality is, we do have something in place in our bylaws that after 60 days, we can start revoking licenses.
Okay, so there's no license necessarily that can be revoked, or not?
Well, not after 15 days, if they don't pay it. But again, if there's an outstanding fine after 60 days, the license of, I don't care what you want to say, whatever entity is having the violation, we could actually start revoking licenses after 60 days.
You'd have to incorporate that by cross-reference, by referencing the section, you know, you know, pursuant to section whatever the town's bylaws.
And then the only other thing I'd say, if it's going to come back and go to the warrant, I just ask that maybe the warrant's not posted until October 1st, after the October 1st meeting, to get this all, you know, it has to go to council, and obviously, we can't post it right away. But just finalize it on October 1st for the warrant.
This is just, I'm sorry. I think your amendment about having the, if the Deputy, the Department of Health or other administrators assigned by town manager happens, and we may need to change the definition section a little bit, so that director means the health director or the administrator who's assigned by town manager.
Okay. And Paul, you said you wanted to say pursuant to...
I would have to, I would have to look up the bylaw that states that 60-day.
Yeah, again, and this is, Marie's going to make the motion. I mean, I think, these are things that could be amended. These are suggestions that could be made to town meeting directly with, you know, we've done this before where we put all changes. And, you know, I think it's not that big a deal.
All right. So I am moved to approve the single-use ban of plastic bag warrant article with the amendment to 2A addition or administrator assigned by town manager, as well as 4A, Department of Health or other administrator as assigned by town manager.
And how about 4D, the...
Oh, 4D.
Well, 4, D5, I think that, didn't you say you had to figure out the wording?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would leave that as is for now, and then give us a chance to get with Town Council. And if we want to make a revision, we can either bring it back on the first, or just present it at the night of town meeting.
Okay.
But that's what I'm saying. If you waited the first, a lot of this could be cleaned up and just posted right after the first.
Okay. And I'll second the motion.
Okay. We've talked this one to death. Is there any, are there any other comments or questions? Debbie, what are you looking for, for clarification of the...
Almost.
Yeah.
That's not going to help you.
Apparently I have different versions of what you...
Oh, that's Marie.
No, you can have it, yeah.
I think it's the same. Would you hand it out as the same in the warrant?
No, it is, oh.
Oh, I may have seen the page on that.
That's in the warrant.
I mean, the packet.
Yeah, yeah.
They are the same.
Marie, this is what you handed out in the packet, right?
I thought so.
Yeah, you can have this, though. This is the packet version.
Maybe find it in print, write yourself, but I only got a copy.
I have copies, Debbie.
All right. So there's a, there's a motion on the floor. And the motion is to, to place this bylaw on the warrant for the town, for the fall town, special town meeting.
Or Number 11.
As, as warrant article Number 11, with the two changes that Marie identified, which is Section 2A definition, Section 4A penalties and enforcement.
You're going to have to renumber also, because you have two Number 4s. You have four penalties and enforcements, and four effective date.
Thank you. So this needs to be renumbered as well, Marie.
Okay.
Can you hear it? Can you see that?
Well, thanks for that one.
We'll just make that technical correction, Marie, granted.
Okay.
So there's four here, special, there's four here.
Oh, okay. So that's got to be three.
No, it's got, effective date becomes five, and separability becomes six.
Oh, there. Okay. Four, five, six. Okay. There, I fixed it, Debbie.
Thanks.
Okay. The motion's made and seconded. My only comment will be, the discussions in the last 10 minutes prove my point, if you don't mind. So I'm going to be voting against this because I think we're not there yet. So all those in favor of placing this on the article, all those opposed, the motion passes 4 to 1. Okay, as to add this to the warrant. With that in mind, we now have a 10 warrant, 10...
Eleven.
Eleven.
Excuse me, an 11 article warrant, and I accept, I accept the motion to accept and close the warrant as now approved. It's okay, motion's been made and seconded, made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Lowe, for, to approve the town warrant. All those in favor, motion passes five zero, to approve the warrant. Thank you all for that spirited discussion, Marie. Thank you very much for your dogged effort on making this happen.
Yeah, just approve the warrant, and my pressure jumped in as Paul and I were talking, but we're just gonna go ahead and say that as a part of the technical corrections that Town Council makes to the warrant, that article start off with votes here at town meeting, votes to amend section XXX of our bylaws to add the following section.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's not on here, but it will be on the warrant article, but that's just a technical matter.
And now that I made all kinds of friends and family here, the, this is the article that I, the item I want to add to the warrant. This isn't for a vote, but it's a discussion, and I just wanted to, I'm handing it out now, and it'll be, Debbie, I'll send you an electronic version, and we'll put this on the, on the, on the agenda for the next meeting, but it, literally, I'll just read the second paragraph. It requests that the administrative offices of the town of Long Meadow that report to the select board be directed that they not issue any permits or authorizations to Columbia Gas for any work within the town limits of Long Meadow until all three of the following conditions are met. One, the formal report that lists the definitive cause of the overpressurization of fires in the Merrimack Valley towns of Lawrence, North Andover, and Andover have been, has been issued by the National Transportation Safety Board and accepted by Massachusetts state officials in Columbia Gas management. And two, that the management team of Columbia Gas demonstrates the satisfaction of the select board of the town of Long Meadow. They have implemented changes to their policies, procedures, and equipment, or training, and/or training to prevent a recurrence of this incident. And three, that Columbia Gas Management Group identified to the satisfaction of the select board of the town of Long Meadow that they have established policies, procedures, and management oversight systems in place sufficient to manage the operations of gas pipeline systems that serve the residents of the town of Long Meadow in a safe and responsible manner. And this directive applies to all departments that report through the town managers at the select board, as well as the committees and boards that report to the direct from the select board, including but not limited to the Department of Public Works and the Building Department, and apply to all requests for permits or approvals by or on behalf of Columbia Gas, their subsidiaries, contractors, or subcontractors doing business on behalf of Columbia Gas, with the exception of applications for road trench permits for the sole purpose of repairing and maintaining existing gas distribution lines. Requests for exceptions to other purposes may be brought directly to the select board on a case-by-case basis. And I, it says, "We further ask other elected officials and boards, such as the planning board and housing committee, similarly support this moratorium." And the reason I've written this is, you know, I spent 35 years of my life in working for a major chemical corporation who was obsessed with safety, and I think the members of the select board will attest to the fact that I've made comments before in other discussions about safety issues and discussions. I'm absolutely convinced that if this happened in a, in a company that had the kind of safety responsibility that I grew up in in my 34 years, this would never have happened twice. And after it happened in the city of Springfield, I'm convinced that Columbia Gas has a management problem and a systems problem. And every problem that, that happens, such as this, can be relatable, and I truly believe this, to people, they call it man materials or machinery. It's either somebody doing something wrong, somebody having the wrong process for doing it, or the machine failed. And until you determine that and fix it, it'll happen again. And, and I just, you know, Columbia Gas is talking about putting in a, a pressure step-down station in the town of Long Meadow. That's something that we're gonna be regulating the pressure into the gas pipelines. That's exactly what failed. And I read in the paper this morning, there's all kinds of speculation that what, what happened, that they took out of service the, the lines that had the sensors, and so when they took that out of service, that pressure went down, and so the regulator somewhere else thought it was low pressure and started building up pressures in the lines. I don't know if that's what happened with, but if that happened, it's clearly an error in, in their process, in their machinery, in their methods, all kinds of stuff. I can't see allowing Columbia Gas to continue to expand that kind of work, especially dealing with, with pressure regulators in the town of Long Meadow, until everybody understands what happened and makes sure it doesn't happen again. All I can say is, thank goodness this didn't happen in Long Meadow, and I feel badly for the communities that it did happen in. So, you know, I'll certainly listen to people's comments. I'd love to have people comment it. I'm not intending for there to be any vote on this, but I want to get this out, so again, people can comment on it. Stephen, I'd even encourage us to send this to Columbia Gas and let them know that the town of Long Meadow is considering bringing this up at their next select, select board meeting. If they wanna come here and talk to us and tell us why they can't do it, I'll tell you that I spent a lot of time putting through this through, clearly exempting road trench permits. I think that we need to do that. But you'll notice that one thing it does not exempt is road trench permits for installing new facilities and new, new, new service, because, you know, because it doesn't. It's simply for repairs. That's my opinion, my opinion only. Welcome to speak to anybody or have anybody talk about this, but I feel passionately about it.
Because we talked about it internally, that's why I asked Mario to stay, and if you wanna, can kinda go, go from our perspective. I mean, I have, so I share the same concerns. I have concerns that we could, this is even legal to do. And I think, Mark, I mean, I, I have concerns with, you know, how some of this is worded, but I think your intent is, is right on. One of the things we talked about this afternoon with Paul Healy, our building commissioner, our fire chief, and with Mario, I asked both Paul Healy and Mario to give me the list of permits that are on, that are open right now, and it is all emergency or scheduled leak repairs that, remember, they were here. Steve Bryant, who's now the, going to be the person who probably takes this hardest, he's the president of Columbia Gas. He was here, sitting in that chair a couple, a few months ago, talking about leaks and how committed they are to doing all this stuff. The thought we had in our, of our discussion today was, keep the permits that we have open, open, allow them to finish those jobs. In fact, they were here working today, which initially caught me off guard, and then I realized after that that Eversource is now the lead agency responding to this issue in the Merrimack Valley.
For good reason, I suspect.
Yeah, for good reason. So... So one of the things, I, I don't believe you can do this as a blanket thing from a legal standpoint. I also don't think you can do it from a work standpoint. We just don't know what's on the horizon for their work and our needs today to say, "We gotta do this." What I did, what we did talk about was, we can administratively say we're not gonna approve any more trench permits until we sat in, you know, until we've given the Merrimack Valley situation a little bit of time to play out. It's still very new, and we need time to look at, where is our resurfacing program going? Where are we gonna be doing projects? Because as you know, the gas company, more than anybody else, has to go before us, before we do a road project. And that's not gonna change. That's not gonna change even with what happened. We're, you know, even if Columbia Gas no longer exists, it's somebody else. There are customers who are going to receive gas service. There are lines that are gonna be carrying gas to our community, and so I wanna manage expectations and not overreact to what happened. But I do think we should tell them, no more trench permits, you know, four weeks, six weeks, let's see how things, let's find it, let's see what we learn in Merrimack Valley. And the other thing, Mark, is NTSB, who's now taking the lead, it's two years before they, I mean, that's not gonna work. That's not gonna work for us. We've got too much work that we wanna do here in town to put it, to put Columbia Gas on ice for two years. That said, we should hit the pause button with them, let them know we're serious. We have had pressure issues in our community. I do believe that upgrading their infrastructure and giving them better tools to manage pressure fluctuations may be a good thing, but I don't know enough about that equipment or those things to say that the project they had talked about would be a benefit or a, or something that could cause the potential for something that happened in the Merrimack Valley. But the point of it all is, there's, it's, there's a lot of layers to this, and there's a lot, a little more time needs to pass, but I think we, if the board, you know, if the board is in agreement with the principle of it, we're gonna probably, we will have a conversation with Columbia Gas and say, "No more new trench permits until we figure out where you guys are going, what's your plan, how are you gonna be handling safety going forward, all those questions that you've raised." And then we wanna look at, where were they gonna need to go next for something that meets our needs? Because the one thing, and I know the people in the Merrimack, in North Andover, Andover, Lawrence, would probably scoff at this idea right now, but ultimately, if the gas utility, whoever it is, doesn't do what they need to do, then it's the customers that end up suffering, not the municipal corporation, not the select board. Or you, as individual customers, would end up suffering, but that's what ends up happening in all this. It always ends up getting passed, the negative stuff always floats down to the customers and the ratepayers, and that's what I wanna, I wanna, I don't wanna make that worse.
Okay, Marie?
One of the things that disturbed me when they did come in front of us is the gentleman who you said is now the president, said, "Well, we're fixing leaks. We're fixing leaks." And I said, "Well, you're not expanding the pipes?" And they're expanding, because it's all right there on their website. What they're doing is they're increasing the capacity going through Longwater, Onorder Service, North Hampton, and Springfield. And he didn't wanna talk about that. And they also have been trying to get everything passed through Boston, so nothing has to be discussed out here in Western Massachusetts. Fortunately, about a month ago, it came in the paper, the Boston stopped them and said, "No, you're gonna have to do environmental studies, and you have to do public forums about Long Meadow, not just Agawam, Long Meadow too." And it was something they were trying to get away with not having to do. I would like to see us write a letter saying that we're requesting that the public forums are being held here in Western Massachusetts, and we're better informed about what their plans are doing and what they are doing, because they keep saying they're cutting here to fix leaks. But it's very interesting, the leaks are being fixed all along the area that they're trying to expand the pipes to. So I don't think we're getting full information, and I think we should be demanding more information of what they're doing in town, and also ask, I'd like a letter to come from the select board saying that we want public forums out here, not just in Boston. And that was actually something that the Energy and Sustainability Committee was going to ask the select board to do even before the explosions began. But as our town manager said, in the summer, there was an issue. And so, Mark, I think we really should be sitting there and looking on how we're going to approach that, because we're a town that they're hooking on to the Tennessee pipeline right here, and they're talking about building a valve station on private property, so we won't have that much information of what's happening. And I would like more information coming, and the select board pushing for finding out what's really happening.
I support it, Marie. I guess the next steps is draft, draft the letter, bring it back, and we'll, I'll certainly vote to put it out.
And you'll rewrite it for me.
No, I'll vote to put it out over the select board's name.
Yeah, I'll start, I'll start the first draft.
I, I just wanna, you know, I, I heard everything you said, and, and from your perspective, I, I get it. Fundamentally, there's a flaw in the management of Columbia Gas, in my opinion, and until that's changed, nothing's gonna change in the way they do business. And I understand, we have to continue to do business, but they have to be put on notice that if you wanna do that, you gotta make some serious changes. Because I go back to, to Merryweather Drive, when there were, you know, there was a leak there every, every, every day that was going on, and the response to that. And, and, yeah, we don't wanna be stuck with not having service, but I need to feel that we've done everything we can. You know, if they, if they get a deal with private landowner to put a, a pressure-reducing station on that, on that property, the only thing we have to stop that is not give them a building permit for the building, 'cause we can't stop the pipeline, because it's federally regulated and all that kind of stuff. But, but I'm saying, if the select board feels that way, we give you coverage. Now, if they say it's illegal, let them take us to court, and we'll drag it through court for a while, you know, and see what happens. But, but it's more important for me to put them on notice that their management is really flawed. And I know that's a, it's a, it's a real comment that I'm putting out there that's potentially, you know, accusational, but I've been there, done that, and I understand, and I believe, that, that when you have repeated incidents like that, it starts at the top of their, the culture of their company doesn't worry about this stuff, or this would never have happened, or certainly wouldn't have been. You know, to the fact that we've had overpressurization problems, we've had gas leaks, I hear you that it may be illegal. I'm still planning on proceeding and seeing if we can get a board, the select board, to vote for this thing.
Well, then, why don't you do this for, you know, Ford just had a big recall of F-150s, 'cause the seatbelts burn up if they retract too fast. We could do the same resolution. I mean, this is, this is way outside the select board's lane to say that we are gonna, we are questioning Columbia Gas's management. That's not for anybody in this room to do.
But that, that may be my motivation.
Are you a shareholder? I mean, it's, the shareholders are the ones who do that.
That's not my...
And I'm not, and I'm not trying to, again, we already had a conversation before I got here tonight about doing a lesser version of exactly what you're suggesting. So I'm actually not, not on the same page about sending them a, a message and saying, "We, you know, we need to really take a step back and reevaluate how we're doing things." I think where you're going with this, though, is going to drag the select board down a rabbit hole completely unnecessarily, when it's just, it's just a reaction, not, not a, let's, let's take time to look at...
There are 86 houses blew up, Stephen.
Yeah, but not here.
By the grace of God.
Right.
By the grace of God, not here.
But, 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 Mark, we don't know that. We, we don't know why they, specifically why they blew up. I just...
Right, and we, we don't know that. And although my motivation may be based on my perception that there's a management problem, my, my action is based on the fact that it's up to the select board to assure the safety of the residents of Long Meadow, not just the, not just the customers of, of Columbia Gas, but all the residents, all the homeowners in the town of Long Meadow. And gas leaks throughout the town don't just threaten the customers, they threaten everybody. And Columbia Gas's inability to understand, you know, until somebody says, "We know what happened, we know how to prevent it, and it's not gonna happen again," you know, how do you say, "Just go willy-nilly, put in another pressure-reducing station, you know, literally in our backyard on Hazardville Road?" That's, that's my take. I don't know, Marie?
Yeah, well, we're gonna think about it, and you're gonna come up with another, you said you, you and your team were coming up with an idea of an approach, too.
Well, we're just gonna...
So if you could bring that to the next select board meeting.
Well, we're just gonna do it. That's within our authority to do that. That, that's why we're gonna do it. And, and, but what happens beyond that, I think, has to depend on the conversations we have with Columbia Gas going forward after that.
But, in my opinion, is they haven't been straight with us for the last two years, literally going back before Merryweather Drive, but certainly, I mean, that was an eye opener, Stephen.
I think that's a misread of that situation, Mark, of Merryweather. That, that's a, that's a misremembrance of what happened on Merryweather. They actually...
I think you're right. I think that was lines that were hanging loose.
Yeah, that was, Mario wasn't here for that one, thank God. Columbia Gas was an outstanding friend to us, a partner with us during Merryweather, because, quite frankly, the contractor who did that project at the time didn't do a good job, good enough job stabilizing the gas main. And Columbia Gas had people out there all the time, never asked us for money, I don't know if they went off the contract or not, but they were pretty good to us throughout that. And by and large, I have found in my dealings with them that they have been reasonable, and I have, you know, I think you can say they weren't being honest, but the other part of this is, and maybe this is because we also run a utility company, that I can some, I must say the word sympathize with Columbia Gas. I mean, there is no doubt, there were errors at Columbia Gas, not only in causing the situation that happened, but also how they responded to it is clearly, shows a tone deafness or just a dereliction of duty that, that they're all gonna pay for. And that, I mean, that, that company is going to pay dearly for how they have handled the situation both before and after. But in the context of our specific relation, I'm not the Landover Town Manager, okay, so I can't harsh them for what happened in Andover. We had to deal with what happens here in Long Meadow. And the other thing, the other part of this, again, is going back to running our utility company, a lot of this expansion stuff is being driven by customer, customer demand. And so, it's, it's just too complicated of a, of a situation to say they shouldn't expand, they shouldn't do this, they shouldn't do that, because they're doing it to meet customer demand. They're doing it to make money, for sure, but they're doing it to meet increased customer demand. And so, to blame Columbia Gas for wanting to, to provide better services to their customers, you know, that's like, that's like blaming us for wanting to change four-inch water mains to six-inch water mains to increase our fire suppression capabilities. I mean, that's, that's, that's in effect what they're doing. But again, not excusing what happened, but it's more complicated than this, this one incident. And the, and their, a service network is far broader than, than the 8,600 homes that were impacted by this. I'm not justifying it, I'm just saying it is a complex thing, and I think it's, this is, this is too simple of a response for where we are today. There may come a time where this is what we need to do, it's just not right now, I don't think.
Thank you for your...
But I do, but again, we are on the same page in many ways. But I do, but again, we are on the same page in many ways. I wanna make that clear, too.
And what did you say you were going to do?
We are going to not issue them any new trench permits for anything, repairs or otherwise, until we get a clearer sense of what work they have. They have twenty-five or thirty-five?
Twenty-five.
And I sent you guys the list. They have twenty-five open permits. They're gonna, we're gonna let them finish all that stuff, but before we issue new trench permits or new building permits, we're gonna have a larger conversation of where things are going. But at the same time, if there's a leaky service line, and we know FY eighteen, that's gonna be on our proposed resurfacing list, are we not gonna let them fix their, repair the line? I mean, how does this play out?
This, this clearly says that if there's a leaking service line, they can fix it. You can, it, it says, with the exception of leaks. You know, I, I mean, your comment is, we're not gonna issue them any. If tonight a leak opens up on, on Route Five.
They, they don't really even need those. Those aren't actually leaks, they just.
They go, let's say, dig safe, yeah, that, that's a different process.
Right, all, Stephen, I hear you loudly and clearly, but, you know, my only retort is that, you know, the governor took the responsibility for investigating this from Columbia Gas and put it on Eversource for a reason, you know? And I, and I suspect it's because he's feeling, or his advisors are saying some things similar to what I am saying. And so, you know, I, I just, I just think that we owe it to the people.
But I know the answer to that. Because, well, hold on, because this is important.
Okay.
It's not how he felt about it or how he wanted to react to it. It's because if he declared a state of emergency, that gave him the legal authorization to choose a different company, hence the state of emergency being declared, and then immediately saying, there, there was a process that followed, he used his authorities that existed.
But he did that in order to give it to Eversource, as opposed to say, Columbia, it's your problem, you fix it. He felt an obligation, he, he.
That was a right call, too.
What?
That's the right, it was a hundred percent the right call.
And, and I'm not gonna speak for the governor, but it seems that, the appearance is, that he felt Columbia was unable to, to investigate this in a, in an appropriate manner, whatever that means. And he thought that somebody else could do that, and, oh, by the way, take care of the remediation system, Marie.
I don't think you guys are really that far off base. You've just said you're not giving any more per, trench permits, and you're, so you've just keep up.
I just don't think, this is not the approach towards.
Okay, I know, but we're not that far apart, so if you could also get information back to us on how that goes, and what communications you hear back, that would be great, too. And I'll work on that letter.
Yeah.
So you can rewrite it.
Fine. So, and I appreciate everybody's indulgence on that issue, but I thought it was important. The last item on our agenda was to discuss our goals, and we've not done that yet, and it's now the end of September, and I don't know if we're gonna spend a lot of time doing that, but I've asked several times for people to submit to me things that they wanna see on a goals document, and I don't, I, I've received nothing.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, Marie gave me, Marie gave me three things.
I always have my lists of things.
Of that project list or a goals list?
My, no, goals.
And I guess the question is, how do we wanna deal with this going into the fiscal year? And I just wanna hear what people wanna, how people wanna move forward without having yet a formal goals document, or just, should I schedule it at one of our next meetings, and we'll discuss the four items we got?
Yeah, then we could do also, you know, maybe, because we got the budget directives, maybe include all that with the goals.
So, well, I mean, I think what I would do is, because this is an annually recurring.
Nightmare.
Stopping point in some ways, why don't we just, why don't you, we think about budget goals, or Paul and I will draft our version of what we think you're gonna want your goals to be for the budget. And, I mean, that's, I mean, that sincerely, like, things that we've heard you say, or things that we guess you're gonna wanna see out of the budget, and we will take a stab at a budget directive that incorporates those goals, and that'll at least be one set of goals that we can discuss and agree on to get the, rather than trying the, the old elephant one bite at a time, so we can start with budget goals.
Normally, I'd say no, but Stephen, it's better than what we got. And we don't have anything right now, so why don't you give it the first crack and we'll move from there.
Can I, should I send my list to them?
Send your list to them, send your list to me, but if others have items on their list, please let me know. You know, I've got two or three items on my list, but.
Two or three list or two or three items?
Yes, the answer's yes to that.
Yes, yes.
Any other comments or questions? Or, just a quick, any subcommittee reports, Marie?
Yes, I've got two. One is that the Energy has one more thing, and that was I asked Dave Miller to write a little memo where they are with the audits. So he says, since the winter of 2018, the town has undergone a series of energy audits for both electric and natural gas usage and the potential savings in each of these areas. The data collection has been completed as of two weeks ago. We anticipate hearing from the subcontractors from both Eversource and Columbia Gas within the next two to three weeks to clarify the modifications that are suggested, the cost of the town, and the options they offer for payment, when this information becomes available before to the select board and town manager for your respective review. So that's where that audit is going. Also, I spoke to the chief about MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Plan that's going along great, and they're, they're working in the departments, and he says the public hearings will probably be somewhere around February, March. And then the other thing was the tax ceiling task force. The first thing we were talking about was expanding the tax base, and we came up with expanding zoning, and we were discussing that. But the other issue that I think needs to be in front of the select board was the water tower property, and possibly asking the town manager to bring up some possible ideas for development. But before, I think that could be, I mean, we're just advisory to the select board, so I'm bringing that back and asking the chair if that could be put on a future agenda, so we could decide whether to give the town manager that directive or not, to come up with some ideas and plans of development of the water tower property as a way of expanding our tax base.
And we're gonna, I was gonna engage PVPC to see what they can do, which I can, I can do that anyway, I was, I was planning on doing that.
Okay, yeah, I will get that on my long-term agenda, short-term agenda.
Okay.
Richard.
I have one quick question, it's not on the goals or anything. Do we have an update on the senior center?
Yeah, the contract for the designers should be processed. I think he probably has it, and once he signs it, and we, and I sign it, we'll schedule a design kickoff. We have our OPM, the OPM did review the contract and recommended that we approve it, so we'll get going with design.
Okay, so you're just waiting on the contractor to sign the contract and get it back, and then?
Yeah, he's got it, he got it today. All reviewed and everything, so we'll get going. I, I think the timeline of bidding in the spring.
I thought January, February is what you guys liked.
We liked, but I, I, we're.
Don't we get it cheaper in January, February?
We, we do, but it may be, or, you know, November, December.
Oh, this year?
Yeah, middle of, no.
I thought you meant 2018.
No, we've got, no. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want a particular senior who may be listening to call me and yell at me that it's not going fast enough tomorrow, but there's a lot of design work to be done.
Do, do you have any follow-up on, we talked about possibly posting the status over there, letting your director post the status so that all the seniors see what's going on, that walks through.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know how that looks. I don't, I, yes, I know Jim will be giving regular updates to the COA, and, and I may give them occasional updates as well, but he'll be keeping them up to date, he'll be on the design committee. I just don't know how, like, putting it up there, what it and there isn't what it looks like.
He's on the design committee, so he can be feeding.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, I think, like with the DPW Design, the committee, the DPW Committee, we, we made regular presentations, and then, then the permanent building committee, you know, things like that. In this case, there wasn't a DPW Committee beyond the permanent building, but there's a COA.
Obviously, you know, my suggestion, add a nice Gantt chart.